Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 8th meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, on behalf of the states of America, and to the recolored for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Michelle Farigno, new clerk to the planning board. This is her first meeting, so please, please be nice to her. She is getting baptized by fire tonight. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Hetzke?
Hetzke here.
Aiken?
Aiken here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Kenauer?
Kenauer here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
Kruger?
Here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Farigno? Here.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Thank you all for coming out tonight, as well as the millions of folks that normally watch our meetings around the world. We do stream on cable access, and YouTube, and Apple TV, and Roku, and Facebook, and, I don't know, there's numerous other ways you can watch Penfield Planning and Zoning Board meetings. And we're way more fun than the zoning board. I just want to put that on for the record. Tonight, we have three items on our agenda: two sketch plans and a preliminary final subdivision request. Typically, on public hearing nights, which is tonight, and the second Thursday of the month, the planning board will spend the first half hour between 6:30 and 7:00 in a work session going over our tabled agenda items and other business that is before us. We've postponed the work session tonight until August 22nd. We normally do not have a second meeting in August. We're having a special work session to cover our tabled items, so that we have more time tonight to hear, get feedback for tonight's applications. Couple things. If you could silence your cellphones, that would be great. And actually, I insist that you silence your cellphones. For the small, I just want to give you a little bit of background about what the planning board does, and for the small percentage of you who do not spend your spare time studying local government structure, a little bit about the planning board and what our responsibilities are. Planning board exists to review subdivision and site plan applications in the town. A subdivision is when someone with a certain sized piece of property wants to divide it into two or more parcels. Site plan is the layout of structures, parking, roadways, landscaping, et cetera, on a piece of property. Planning board has no authority to make or change zoning laws or codes, only to follow them and determine whether an application meets a criteria under those laws and codes. This meeting, we have two sketch plans and one preliminary final. I may have more to say in a little bit, but we have minutes from our last July 11th meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. And can I entertain a motion to approve?
Tidings' motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Good job. It's the first time she's done that, so that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to move right into our first sketch plan. To give you an idea of what a sketch plan is, it's a concept plan generated by an applicant who has had, has an idea for a given development and is seeking feedback from the town and the public on that idea before they invest more significant resources into engineering and the design of the development. So, like I said before, we have two sketch plans being presented, as well as a preliminary final. Some of the rules of the evening, like I mentioned before, please turn off your cellphones. The way our process works, the applicant will present their project to the board, and they'll sit at one of these two tables. And once they're done presenting the project, the board will ask questions. After that, we'll open it up to the audience. There are, if you'd like to speak, there are slips of paper like this over on that table at the entry to the auditorium. Please fill one of those out. We have quite a few people who would like to speak, so we are going to, so that everyone can speak, we're going to limit each individual speaker's to three minutes. And we have a timer that will be on the, it'll be shown on the TV. Once that happens, at least for, I'm guessing, most of you are here for our third application, which is the proposed Costco concept plan. If the two tables are open, I will bring up the first person, and then the person after that will be, let's call it, on deck, sitting like in the empty one, waiting for the first person, so that we can keep it moving forward quickly. And, let's see, please maintain civility. Consider everyone's time, and when you speak, bring up something new, not simply a repeat of what other speakers have said, so that we can accommodate everybody who wishes to speak. We do have a hard stop at 9:45 tonight. One of the individuals involved in tonight's proceedings has a medical condition and can't sit for too long, so we need to respect that. And if you are not here, and you want to call in, you can call in at (585) 340-8771. We have operators standing by to put you in a queue. And you can also submit electronic comments. Visit the Penfield website, penfield.org, and there should be links to this meeting and the planning department, and most of the applications that are before the various boards in the town of Penfield. And we welcome your comments. We have already received a number of comments that all have been submitted into the public record. And with that, Doug, would you please, let's get started. Read the first sketch plan.
Okay. Application number one, McMahon-Larrue Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Dr. Kaitlyn Hoffman, requesting an informal discussion before the board with the proposed subdivision of the existing 5.24 acre lot and site plan to allow the development of a 5,241 square foot dental office to be located at 2520 Browncroft Boulevard. The properties now are formerly owned by Penfield Federal Credit Union and zoned business non-retail, BNR. Application 24P-0014, SBL 123.07-2-10.1.
Okay, great. Thanks, Doug. My name's Ian Cookman. I'm with McMahon-Larrue Associates. I'm here with Milestone Construction.
My name's John Lapp. I'm representative of Milestone Construction.
I'm Kaitlyn Hoffman with Silver Maple Dental, and that's my partner, Allison Cohen. And I'm here just to represent.
And then also, over here, we have representative from Family First.
Hi, I'm Tom Danberg. I'm the president of Family First Credit Union.
Okay, so, the project that we're proposing here is a subdivided parcel from the Family First Federal Credit Union. We're going to be subdividing a portion just big enough to facilitate the proposed 5,200 square foot dental office, along with parking, sufficient parking for their peak demand needs, and zoning code for parking, dimensional requirements, setbacks, and so forth. In addition, we have to break off enough to mitigate not only the site's stormwater management, but we also have to replicate the existing stormwater management features that are being utilized for the Family First Federal Credit Union facility and runoff. We're, at this point, soliciting feedback from both the board and the public here. A couple of hot-button items that we anticipate is that it's in a wooded EPod, so we're going to be seeking a separate permit for that. You can see in this schematic, we're trying to maintain the wooded buffer to the, to the north of the site. And that is, you know, existing mature tree species, and we're going to do our best to preserve that, not only from an EPod standpoint, but also from a screening buffer standpoint, as the district adjacent to our parcel to the north is a residential district. So we will maintain and even enhance that screening as necessary, and as identified from the Conservation Board from an EPod standpoint. Exist, you know, we're adjacent to the Fast Track down there to the south, so the facility fits well with the character of the district. It's, it's in a, I believe, a general commercial district, so no zoning use or area variances are going to be required as part of this project. But the proposed business operations of the dental office is a nice transitional use going from a gas station to a residential district. So we believe it's a good, good application for this business operation. We did receive PRC comments from town staff. We received comments from the county. There is no identification of issues from a traffic standpoint from Monroe County DOT, so we don't see any issues technically moving forward. At this point, we're just, again, soliciting feedback from the board and the community to see if there's any additional considerations we may need to address. So with that, I'll open it up. If there's any questions about the business operation, we have the dental group here to answer any of those questions, if you need to, need to ask those.
Okay. Thank you. Terry, do you want to start off?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Two doctors in this office, correct?
Yep.
Hours of operation will be?
Seven to 3:30. It's Monday through Thursday currently, and probably going to keep it that way.
No nighttime hours?
No weekends, no nighttime.
Great. Okay. No variance or necessary, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think I'm not good right now. I like the, this building looks good. At the time, we'll require you to look at the, all the, you know, projects that can be used on the building, to take a look at that, landscaping plan, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Two dentists, 26 parking spots?
So it's, it's planned for eventually three dentists and six hygiene.
And then, can you possibly expand on the stormwater?
Sure.
The proposed stormwater, and why? Is there an issue with the Family First parcel currently? Or is there stormwater management facility on this parcel, so you need to combine it all?
Yeah, so if you pull up the last-
If you can explain that a little better.
-site plan sheet, the colorized site plan sheet, the, the blue stormwater area to the southwest corner, that is an existing stormwater pot. It's a dry detention basin. We're going to retrofit that so that it can meet the dental office runoff needs. And then the long, elongated feature, either we're going to place there or to the east of the proposed building, that will be designed to handle the Family First stormwater runoff. Just the way the topography is and the grading, it would be easier to utilize the existing stormwater feature.
Retention or detention?
Detention.
Okay, so not-
Outlet control, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Bob?
One question, the rain garden, that would be for some stormwater infiltration?
That will be to meet New York State DEC stormwater requirements for runoff reduction volume. And the soils at the site are sea soils, so not great infiltrative capacity, but they'll be designed to mitigate the runoff reduction volume required.
Okay, and with your parking, what would be the plan for snow storage if needed?
Yeah, snow storage still needs to be considered in a little bit more detail, but I believe there's enough area along the perimeter of the parking to provide that snow storage.
How about a dumpster location there in the northeast? Per, set, okay.
Yep.
I didn't mean to jump in.
Nope, I'm good.
Anybody else on the board? Questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Have you considered any alternatives to the location of that curb cut for the entry drive?
As it's shown now, it's somewhat of a natural clearing there, so it would likely be the least invasive or destructive to the existing tree stand that's out there.
So would your answer be no?
Say that again?
Your answer would be no, then. You have not considered alternative locations.
To the proposed curb cut?
Yeah.
Do you have a suggestion for an alternative? I would consider it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Okay. All right. Let's open it up to the audience. I have two people that would like to speak. I don't know if-
I can, I can give them room here.
Okay. If, whoever would like to speak on this, when I call your name, if you could come up to this empty chair here, at this table, and state your name and address for the record, and then please address your comments to the, to the board and not to the applicant. And that goes for every application tonight.
Yes.
And every night, not just tonight. So, and one other thing that I forgot to mention was, if I butcher your name, please don't crucify me for it.
I don't always pronounce things perfectly.
So, our first speaker, Sandra Gasserlek.
If you could just, yeah, this one. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the board. My name is Sandra Gasserlek. I reside at 1763 Creek Street. This property is directly in front of the proposed dental office. I've been at this location for 22-plus years, noting that this track of street is extremely congested, with Fast Track now being there. Fast Track was not there when I purchased my property. We've had some significant issues with traffic in the area. When my son was small and would get on the school bus, he had almost been hit by a bu, by cars crossing the street to get on the school bus. I petitioned the town to help me with the county, to get a school bus stop sign, which is still in place, at the end of the street. Debbie Draw and Linda Cole helped me with that. It did not solve the problem. People still drove through the red lights. And so, the school district deemed that my pickup spot by residents was a dangerous area because of the traffic, and had to reroute the school bus stop, so that my son got on the same street, same side of the street as my home, to avoid getting hit by a car. We have young children in the area that cross in front of this. It is a wooded lot in front of my home. We have significant animals, deer, coyote, fox, turkeys. We have, I have cameras on the outside of my house and have noted herds of up to 10 deer that cross. There's a known trail behind my house for wildlife. I'm concerned about the buffer between this residential area and yet another commercial area. We already have, we already have trouble with Fast Track, with people coming off of Browncroft at a high rate of speed, and using that area like a drag strip. There's a slight blind curve there, right before Fast Track, that if I'm trying to pull into my driveway, I cannot do so safely because of the traffic. Traffic backs up in the morning and in the afternoon. And I would like to have, you said that they did a, that DOT did a, a study? Or did they just come out and look at it? Because I would like a study of that area. I have petitioned the town several times in the past 22 years to, when they widen that street and they put the turning lane in there, I asked for a green arrow. My, my complaints were, were met with deaf ears. I've almost been hit by a car, even this Tuesday, I was almost hit by a car trying to check my mail, because when the traffic backs up in front of the street at the corner, or even if somebody's trying to get into the gas station, people drive on the shoulder of the road, they've driven through my yard. I've had motorcycles drive down the sidewalk to avoid getting caught in that traffic. I have young children in the area. I can't have family over, when my son was small, he couldn't play in the front yard because of this issue. So, I'm not, I'm not pleased about this applicant. I'm not pleased about the plan. I, I find that there are other alternatives and other places that this dentist office could go, more in a commercial area.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the time to speak.
Sure. We have Zachary Aberhart. Zachary, come on up.
Hello, my name is Zachary Aberhart. I'm also a resident of 1763 Creek Street. I'm the kid that almost got hit. I'm just going to read from a script, so I'm sorry if I go over the same points. My name is Zach Aberhart. I'm here in opposition of the building of the dentist office, or any building on the portion of property belonging to 2520 Browncroft Boulevard, that is looking to be subdivided. Before I speak about that, I would like to introduce myself further to the board and audience. I think it's important to know who I am, and my connection to this town. Let me also say that I don't have any qualms with the individuals trying to move there. I think it's a great business opportunity for them. No shame there. I'm going to paraphrase a little bit, just to buy time. I'm 26 years old. I've lived in that house for 22 years, so my entire life, essentially. I went to Penfield schools. I was in Troop 312. I've done numerous Eagle Scout projects around the town, so I'm very connected to the nature and to this town. So, probably asking yourself, why am I giving a long introduction? I want you to know that, while I'm young, I've spent my entire life here. I've been helping to build this community, this community of not only people, but of nature as well. While I agree that the construction will cause a large upset of traffic in already congested area, my bigger concerns are safety and the lack of care this town has been showing for small pockets of wildlife. Our road is quite long, with many small dead-end roads. At our end is Fast Track, an incredibly convenient place for, for a quick snack and drink. There's a constant stream of people moving down our road towards the gas station to grab a quick snack, or maybe even fill up on gas. Many of these individuals are children, sometimes even my younger brother, who is 12 years old. He does not live with me. He lives with my father. You may not like it, but nobody walks to the end of Creek Street to use the crosswalk. They cross in front of my house. As it has been made extremely clear to the town on multiple occasions, people turn onto our road at a high speed and absolutely love to see how fast their car can go down our long, straight road. This is already a problem. We already have children and adults on bikes, skateboard, scooters, crossing the road in front of our house to reach their destination. Adding a business across the road, and you're looking to add cars trying to turn into fast traffic while individuals are trying to walk or bike down the road, this isn't a good idea. You are merely tempting fate. I am lucky to have grown up in a house that backs up to an undeveloped piece of forested You can see all the animals, I'm trying to go fast here. You can see all the animals as they cross over. You can see deer, raccoon, all sorts. Putting it there would not only take away their homes, but their grazing area as well. It's a frequent area that they go to. And I think it would be a great loss to lose more forested area. I know the situation is different from Shadow Pines and the other events that are happening here, but even though it's small, I think it's still a very important piece of land that the town needs to consider keeping around. These forested areas do provide a good visual beauty to our town. They make our town more enjoyable to the individuals living around. I don't know about you, but I don't really like looking at the sides of buildings. I like to look at nature across the road from me. I apologize for paraphrasing a little bit here. I'm trying to buy for time. I would like to leave potentially this with you guys, so you can read on a later date. It goes into everything. I just don't want to take up more time, because I know-
Yeah, you can just submit it over here, and it will be submitted into the record.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate your time, everybody.
Sure. Thank you for coming. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to this application? Okay, do we have any? Let me just see if there's any callers. Just scrolling through the messages to see. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your input, and we will review this and put a memo together and send it out.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug. Second application.
Application number two, McMahon-Larrue Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Brandon Emerson, requests under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2, and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval to re-subdivide a 35.7, 38.75 acre property into two lots and construction of a single-family home at 1820 Plank Road. The properties now are formerly owned by David and Wanda Williams and zoned Rural Agricultural, RA2. Application 24P-0015, SBL 096.03-1-25.
You've got to introduce yourself again.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Brian White from McMahon-Larrue Associates. I'm here tonight with Brandon Emerson, applicant for this application. As Doug had mentioned, we're looking to subdivide off approximately 36 acres from a 38-acre parcel along the north side of Plank Road to build a single-family home. The property will be serviced by public water and a septic system. We are currently in the process of addressing the engineering comments, and we're in communication with the Water Authority and Health Department. We did previously appear to the Penfield Zoning Board on June 20th, where we received an area variance for side setback restriction for an existing garage located on Lot 1. By code, it's required to be 50 feet off the property line due to its size, but we have reduced that dimension down to 10.9 feet. It is important to note that both the proposed driveway for the new dwelling and the garage are both existing. The only future improvement to this property at this time would be the new single-family home located on Lot 2, with the proposed septic system located to the southeast of the dwelling. I'd like to give the floor to Brandon to talk about his intent for the property moving forward.
Thank you. My name is Brandon Emerson, currently a resident in Penfield. This is, if I can sum it up briefly, like my lifelong dream, or at least my adult dream, to own a piece of land that I can call my own for my wife and my three boys. They're ages 11, 9, and 7. This gives us a little space to roam, get outdoors, love nature. My intention is just to improve upon the land that is there. It is currently owned by my wife's grandfather. He has about 100 or so peach trees, 100 or so apple trees. The last four years or so, as he's gotten up there in age, has not been able to maintain it. So I've been taking it upon myself to maintain the property so it doesn't fall into disrepair. I've planted a bunch of native oak trees, chestnut trees. My entire goal is to keep this part of Penfield looking very much the way it does now, but for my family and I to have a, a small house behind that barn that's there now.
Thank you for your presentation. Babion Serov.
Sure. As far as a timeframe, once this is subdivided, what would be your timeline moving forward?
We're still working on architectural plans, but the timeline is to proceed, you know, within, I would say, the next several months pending approval for this. We're working on architectural plans, and then we'll be preparing a plot plan for administrative review and approval for building permit.
Okay.
So, intent to build.
Yeah, and there, there's not a rush to build, but certainly if we own the land and we're paying taxes on it and paying for the land, we would like to build as soon as we can.
Okay, and then if it is subdivided, I know there would have to be some consideration to temporarily, temporarily allow the auxiliary structure there until the home is built.
That is correct. There is an existing barn on proposed Lot 2.
Right.
But we do have intent to build, you know, post-approval.
Okay. Okay. So the new lot will be the flag lot, right?
That's correct.
I see a septic, done perk tests and all that is?
Yep, perk tests have been completed.
Workable.
We had the witness test through the county health department. We're working on final communication with them to get their approval, but at this point, we anticipate their approval here shortly.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
I do. Do you have to, in building the, the second house, do you have to do any tree removal?
So this, this proposed Lot 2 is part of a, an old apple orchard. So there will be, I would say, a, a small area of removal for the, the older trees through there, but Brandon has been planting new trees and, and I think wants to preserve the character of that lot long-term.
Some of the tree, native trees are pretty old. If you don't know anything about peach trees, there's just a useful life, other than, like, apple trees will live forever, you can't kill them. Peach trees just tend to, after a given time. So a lot of these are barely hanging on as-is, and I don't have my license to spray pesticides and things like that, so they eventually succumb to peach leaf curls. So, some of them are coming down anyhow just because they're dead, but as they go down, instead of just having a big field to mow, I've been trying to replant more native trees.
Okay. Jim, any?
Yeah, I, I just wanna clarify, if, if the board were to consider your application favorably, we would be creating a non-conforming condition. All, all approval resolutions expire. So, you were, you were a little non-committal about, you know, when you're gonna start the build, but the approval resolution, if, if in fact it is granted by the town, is gonna expire in a year. So, you know, you, you need to know that. If, if you didn't come back before this board and give, you know, just cause for us extending that approval, then in theory it could expire.
I apologize then, I didn't understand. I've met with builders, bankers, like, we're ready to go.
Okay. Just wanna make sure you understand that.
Yes, yes, understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this application? I see a hand in the back.
We can hear back here.
Okay, I, Brian, can you turn the volume up because the pe, the folks in the back of the auditorium cannot hear?
If everyone can move closer to the microphones too, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, whoever's speaking, try to talk close to the microphone. Okay, any comments on the, this application that anyone would like to share? Okay, I don't think we have any calls. Okay. Thank you very much. We will, we'll be back to you. It'll be table tonight, and we'll address it in the 22nd.
Understand.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably the application that everyone's here to see. Doug, would you like to read our third agenda item?
All right, application number three, BME Associates, Tenlift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Penfield, and I wanna correct this for the record, it was advertised as Penfield Partners LLC, I believe it is Penfield NY Partners LLC. Request an informal discussion before the board with a proposed commercial and residential project with associated site improvements to be located in the MUD and to be considered for rezoning to PD Plan Development District located at 1767, 1775, 1781, 1787, 1801, and 1810, Fairport 9 Mile Point Road. The properties now are formerly owned by WRM Holdings III LLC, William &amp; Debbie Wickham, Gregory &amp; Lisa Wickham, Jeffrey &amp; Elizabeth Rogers, James Reed, Sebastian &amp; Conceda Curatolo, and Michael &amp; Maria Spina, Spina, and Zoned Mixed Use District MUD. Application 24P-0016, SBLs 125.01-1-33.11, 3.11, 3.2, 2, 4, and 25.21.
Okay.
Good evening.
Floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Goldman from the Woodsovia Gilman Law Firm. I'm the attorney and agent for Penfield Partners, who is proposing a development within the mixed-use district on the Route 250 corridor. With me here this evening on the sketch plan application, and our primary presenter will be Peter Vars, President of BME Associates, who is the project engineer. Also with us are principals of the owner, as well as individuals representing consultants and principals at Costco, who will be available to answer questions of the board if there are questions that are addressed at this stage. Our intention this evening, of course, is to present our sketch plan. And sketch plan, as you know, is a preliminary step in the overall scheme of things for approvals. Similar to what you heard on the first application this evening, there are concept plans which are a part of this, full engineering and full detail would follow after a review by the planning board and a sketch plan letter, if you will, from the planning board itself. Our expectation this evening is that we will do our presentation, we'll answer questions from the board, we will take notes of the comments which are made from board members, we will listen to members of the public, we will take notes on those comments as well. We anticipate that we will be having a revised sketch plan to address the comments that we have received. My role this evening is relatively short, and that's to put a little context to what it is we're talking about. This is part of the mixed-use district. The town of Penfield, town of planned progress, has throughout its comprehensive plan structure, been at the forefront of dealing with mixed-use districts. The first one, which was done, was through the 1990 comprehensive plan for La Salle's Landing down at the south end of the bay. Subsequently, in 2010, our mixed-use district was master-planned and comprehensive planned to be set forth, and that comprehensive plan is shown on the map which is in front of you. It is a total of 358 acres of land. Our PD, which we are talking about, or our proposal, relates to 51 acres in the middle. As you can see, it's the colored highlighted area of the site. When you take a look at the overall site, the arbors is at the far north, which is on the right of the map. Then there is some land which is yet to be proposed for development. We have our site to the south, excuse me, to the, to the east of Route 250 is Penfield Heights, which received approval from the planning board. In addition, Penfield Square across the street and just south of us is a project which did receive mixed-use approval and which has, which is under constru, and not under construction, it's actually constructed and operating, and within the district is the YMCA. So we are a small part of the overall mixed-use district that we are talking about this evening. The concept of the mixed-use district is to, is to provide a mix of commercial and residential uses. There was an initial code which was prepared, presented, and in place, and under which the arbors was considered, as well as Penfield Heights and the Penfield Square project. The town ultimately revised their land use regulations to provide the planning board flexibility in dealing with future, future plans and future developments. In addition, the 2023 Town Comprehensive Plan addressed this general mixed-use area and, and stated and changed some of the language, and, and it's maybe a nuance-y change, but it is a change nonetheless, and it does talk about the commercial aspects of the, of the projects to be pedestrian-friendly. And that is in part what Peter is gonna be talking about as part of the sketch plan presentation this evening. So with that, we do wanna allow as much time as possible for the public. I'll turn it over to Peter.
Thank you, Jerry. As mentioned, I am Peter Vars with BME Associates. So, I will take some time here, not a lot of time, but to walk you through the sketch plan that's been prepared. And as, as pointed out, this is the sketch plan review. This is the initial plan that's been prepared in consultation with the developer and the tenants looking to occupy this space. The, the parcel under consideration consists of six tax parcels, as Mr. Sangster read into the, with the, the publication notice, in totals 51.3 acres. Five of the tax parcels are located on the west side of New York State Route 250, which is the top of the map as you see it on your screens in front of you. And that totals 33.1 acres. The remaining tax parcel is on the east side of New York State Route 250 and forms the southeast corner with the Suites Corners Road intersection, and that totals 18.2 acres. The west side property is bounded by the Penfield Square mixed-use development to the south, the lands of the YMCA to the west, undeveloped land to the north, which is within the mixed-use district itself. And the property occupies approximately 1,100 lineal feet of frontage along Route 250, which forms its eastern boundary. The east side parcel is bounded by the Wickham Farms operation to the east, the approved Penfield Heights mixed-use development to the south, which has received approval from this board but has yet to start construction. And then it occupies 650 lineal feet of frontage along New York State Route 250 as its western boundary, and 700 lineal feet of frontage along Suites Corners Road as its northern boundary. As Jerry mentioned, all of the property is zoned in the mixed-use district, and it is primarily located in the Zone A Development Zone, which is the high-density core of the mixed-use district. In preparing the sketch plan layout, we took into consideration several factors, including tenants of the mixed-use design manual itself, such as complete street design, pedestrian connectivity and circulation, building lot coverage and green space requirements, and preservation of natural resources. Also with this layout, we, we are aware of the town of Penfield's recently completed Route 250 corridor study as it relates to the mixed-use district, as it relates to traffic and access management. On the west side parcel, we took into account the existing development to the south, the YMCA, and also Penfield Square, and the mixed-use design manual features that were constructed within Penfield Square with the intent to continue northward as the mixed-use district developed, moving north, northwards. As it relates to the east side, we took in account access to the highways, Route 250 and the Suites Corners Road, but also the approved plan for Penfield Heights, even though it's not yet been constructed, we did take into account how that, how that project layout has been approved as it relates to interconnectivity between this parcel and the parcel to the south. The plan, the sketch plan currently proposes 413,530 square feet of total floor space. That represents 8,060 square feet per acre. It consists of 257,050 square feet of non-residential space spread amongst nine buildings. It also includes 156,480 square feet of residential space for 104 proposed market-rate rental apartments. These apartments would be provided in four three-story apartment buildings with 26 units per building. This non-residential residential floor space works out ratio to a 60-40% ratio. The green space on this project results is about 25 acres, which is around 48% of the total site, site area, and the total building coverage is, is around 12.1%, which is about 6.2 acres. Getting into a little bit more detail on the sketch plan layout, on the west side, the 33.1 acres, it is central, the layout is centralized around an anchor retailer, Costco. And thus, it has been located here to establish the commercial core of the mixed-use district at the Suites Corners Road intersection with Route 250. The building proposed, is proposed to be located over 400 feet off of Route 250 to, to get it into the central portion of the property. The primary access to this, to this west side parcel would be from Route 250 through the creation of a four-way signalized intersection at Suites Corners Road. This four-way intersection is identified within the mixed-use design manual as being a key component of the district. It was one of the goals of the manual to create this four-way intersection, and it also is identified within the recently completed town Route 250 corridor study as to create a signalized intersection in this location. The plan also, at the current time, proposes the extension of Penfield Square Road, which is at the western end of Penfield Square. It would be proposed to extend northward, or northbound, I guess. It would be constructed and has been designed and would be constructed as a complete street per the design manual criteria. That means two travel lanes, on-street parking, trelon areas and sidewalks. It basically would mimic Penfield Square Road as it exists today to the south. As it extends to the north, we are also proposing two additional commercial properties on the west side of Penfield Square Road, an 8,000-square-foot and a 7,200-square-foot building pad. This also is to replicate what is planned for Penfield, in Penfield Square to the south. If this board recalls, there is land reserved to the west of Penfield Square Road, within Penfield Square, for future development purposes. So the, with the intent was- So with the intent was the board has, is that Penfield Square Road, as it moves north, would be not just a back alley, it would be a, a street, a complete street with activity along it. The Penfield Square Road will also be laid out as to extend all the way to the north to allow its future extension northward into the undeveloped lands to the north in the event that that were to come in by others. This also is identified within the 250 corridor study as a key component of the transportation system throughout the mixed-use district. On the west side, parking will be provided in the form of there'd be 929 parking spaces along with 125 spaces along the streets itself. That works out to just over five spaces per thousand square feet of building space on the west side, which complies with the Town Code for parking. We acknowledge this layout on the west side will need to accommodate the extension of the pedestrian spine that currently exists within Penfield Square. That is something we are working on and will continue to work on and bring back to this board because we do know it's an important component within the district. But there is also, or I shouldn't say, in addition, we are also providing additional sidewalks. There will be sidewalk constructed along the west side of Route 250, along the right-of-way. It'll be the extension of what we have called the Route 250 sidewalk that exists along YMCA's frontage and the Penfield Square frontage. So sidewalk is proposed along the entire 1,100-foot frontage of Route 250 so that that sidewalk system continues. At Suites Corners Road, that intersection will have full pedestrian signals and crosswalks. And in addition to this, the complete street of Penfield Square Road, as we mentioned, will have sidewalks on both sides of that street. And as you recall, within Penfield Square, those sidewalks are wider on one side to allow multimodal transportation. In addition, there will be sidewalk networks constructed throughout to provide direct pedestrian access to the commercial uses, to the adjoining uses to the south, to the Route 250 sidewalk system, and the complete street sidewalk system. As we go to the east-side parcel, the 18.2 acres, this is proposed as a mix of commercial and residential uses to be compatible with the Penfield Heights' proposed development to the south, and also to transition to the Wickham Farms use to the east. The layout has been prepared to account for access both to Route 250 as a write-in, write-out only access, and then a full access to Suites Corners Road. It will also include connections to the two road stubs that are planned to be within Penfield Heights and depending who would be built first. But, thank you for zooming in, Mike. But, so the two street systems running north-south. So the proposal is the frontage portion or along 250 is we would be proposing five commercial buildings totaling around 57,100 square feet of space. These buildings will have two fronts. The front three buildings front both on 250 and then the internal complete street, and the two larger buildings will front on the two complete streets, ones to its west and ones to its east. The completes, there will be a complete street constructed off Suites Corners Road and extends south to serve, serve the project. As we mentioned, the two commercial buildings will front on that street, and then the four apartment buildings will front on that street to the east. And these will be, as we mentioned, three-story buildings. And then to the east of those apartment buildings are proposed six 10-car garages for the residents of the proposed apartments. Parking on the east side, parking in the non-residential area is proposed at 235 spaces plus 28 on-street parking spaces. So that results in around 4.6 spaces per thousand square feet of non-residential floor space. As it relates to the residential uses, the 104 units, we are providing 160 spaces. That's 1.5 spaces per unit. And of those 160 spaces, 108 of those spaces, or two-thirds of them, will be covered, and that will be in the form of the six 10-car garages we previously mentioned. And each apartment building will have 12 garage spaces on its first floor, okay? So there's 12 spaces in the building, and then there's the detached garages to the east. Sidewalks will be provided throughout the east side also. Sidewalks will be constructed along the Route 250 frontage and along the Suites Corners Road frontage. That totals around 1,350 lineal feet. Combine that with the frontage along 250, there'll be over 2,500 lineal feet of sidewalk constructed along the Route 250 and Suites Corners Road right-of-ways. Through this completion, actually, what will happen is someone would be able to walk all the way from, there will be a sidewalk system complete from the YMCA to the south up to Suites Corners Road and eastward to Wickham Farms. Internally, sidewalks will be constructed along the complete streets and provide connectivity between the residential units and the commercial units, along with connections south into Penfield Heights. And it will also link up with the sidewalk system along the street right-of-ways. The last couple of things I would just like to cover as it relates to the overall project. The wetlands have been field delineated on the property and will be submitted for jurisdictional determinations. There are two wetland areas. There is wetlands on the west side of the western parcel, basically primarily in the lands of the YMCA, but the buffer zone does encroach up into the property. And then there are wetlands in the east side of the eastern parcel along with a stream corridor. This layout has been prepared to avoid those wetland areas, to preserve them along with the stream corridor. There is no disturbance proposed of those wetland or natural environmental features. We fully acknowledge the, the concern over traffic within, with this proposed project. We have, are aware of and have reviewed the town's Route 250 corridor study that was recently completed by the town's traffic consultant engineer. This will be the basis for the specific traffic study that would be completed with this project and submitted with the formal application. We have had initial discussions with the New York State Department of Transportation and the Town of Penfield's traffic consultant to initiate the discussions on the scope of the traffic study, which basically is going to be through the whole corridor of the mixed-use district. It will, we also will be discussing access management as it relates to number of points of access and how those access points will be controlled, and look obviously at traffic and trip generation and trip distribution. The project will be served by public water and public sewer. Those utilities are available at the property. We know, we acknowledge the mixed-use district has an architectural standard, though that information would be, will be provided with, when there is the formal application to be submitted, partially will be as we work on the apartment elevations, and also as we begin identifying commercial tenants. The project will also include the design and implementation of a complete stormwater management plan. The west side drains east to west, entering the wetlands to the west, and then the east side drains west to east, draining to the stream corridor that's located along the east side of the property. In protecting that east side of the property, we also provide a buffer between the development and the Wickham Farms operation to the east. We have received the PRC comments. We have reviewed them. We will be looking to address those as part of any updated revised plan that we prepare. And I just reiterate what Jerry said to close his remarks, our, rest of our role this evening is to, first, we would answer any questions the board seems, deems necessary this evening, but more importantly, we're here to listen, to solicit the feedback from the planning board, listen to the public comment, and then go back, review that along with all the written submitted comments. And basically, our intent is as likely as to come back with a revised sketch plan for further discussion with the board. So with that.
Great. That was a thorough presentation. I have nothing more to add. So we're prepared to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Thank you for your presentation. I have to say, there was a lot to take in. You know, I think certainly on my mind, I'd imagine it's on everybody else's mind. As a 33-year resident of the town, what kind of traffic impacts do you anticipate? I mean, what's a typical, there's a proposed Costco, but then the development on the east side, daily addition to 250? What's anticipated?
So, I'm going to answer that two ways. First of all, the recently completed corridor study did that exactly, is they looked at the build-out of the mixed-use district. They estimated trip generations based on the full build-out of the district, based on the criteria within the zoning, whether it's a Zone A area, Zone B, they estimated. So that was done to start identifying likely highway mitigation that would be required along this corridor. And that, that includes signalization of Suites Corners Road intersection. It can include identification of improvements at the Wayland Road intersection. It includes lane improvements such as turning lanes at key intersections. The corridor study goes through that. What we are doing, and what we will be doing, is we've been provided that data, so we know what the baseline is. This gets back to my comment of using that corridor study as a baseline. We are then going to look at, and this would be for any application in the district. Now that we have identified uses of this 50 acres, because of the types of uses we know, we can estimate trip generations from these projects. We can estimate it from apartments, market-rate apartments. We can estimate it from the retail and the commercial and the restaurant uses. We'll estimate those trip generations. First step is then to compare that to what did the corridor study say was maybe coming out of this. Find out what that magnitude of difference is. Then we'll rerun the analysis that the town's traffic consultant did, said, okay, how does this react or relate to the, the improvement schedule that was identified within the corridor study? Because the corridor study does have an improvement schedule within, within it right now. This is going to say, does this change in any way? And that's been part of the initial discussions we've had with New York State DOT. So do we have the answer here today, tonight? No. Okay? Because of, part of this is, we need to get solicitation from this board because one of the key parts is, we need to also come to a consensus, where is the access points going to be? Where does Penfield Square Road actually end up? Those types of things, so that then we can do the comprehensive analysis as part of moving forward.
Yeah, I think, just to embellish on that just a little bit, the end, the end result of our study is going to be to take the corridor study information which already was there and take a look at what kind of delta or difference would occur as a result of this project. For example, the project is not likely to have any, at least the retail portion of it, the Costco portion is not likely to have any impact on AMP hour traffic since they opened at 10 o'clock. That may be, that may be a different...
Hey, please?
That, that may provide some different spin on the analysis and taking a look at it, but suffice it to say, this will be thoroughly analyzed from a traffic point of view.
Guess another question I have. How, how do you see this fitting into the mixed-use district? I mean, how, I mean, there's, I will say, whenever I've imagined what this area looks like, I have to admit, it's, it's not that. So... Can you kind of explain how it fits?
Why don't you go first?
So, are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to go back to the other map, or no?
No, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
So, there's a couple of things along that way. And it's, part of it is, is the tenants of the mixed-use district. And one of the key tenants was, was, you know, pedestrian mobility, multimodal mobility. So that's got to obviously be incorporated in this, and that can be done. Architecture will be important also, but then also, it's also the environment around it with regards to landscaping, buffering, and whatnot. We have, Costco has examples of where they've anchored mixed-use areas, and we will be providing that information to the board to show how it does fit and how it can be integrated. Because the other thing is, is what we've learned too, is, is during some of the initial planning of this mixed-use district, it was to make it a, a community center, a vibrant community center, and, and what is driving the area during the day while people are aware. The town was concerned somewhat that maybe this was becoming too much of an apartment district area where everybody left during the day. So there does need to be commercial use brought forward. You know, we've heard the terms at times of, of, you know, creating a commercial core and then allowing that to drive the rest of the development outward, such that, and that's why we said, use this to establish the core, and then as the lands develop around that, that then becomes not only the smaller-scale retail and commercial areas that, that are ancillary to such a large retailer, but also allows the residents in that area to easily shop, work, whatever, in that area. So we understand the challenge before us in that, and that we've got to provide that, you know, that, that basis.
And in part, that's why we provided the, the other map, if we can put that back up. And that is, is that we are taking a holistic approach to the concept of mixed use, as opposed to taking it on a parcel-by-parcel or development-by-development basis, taking a look at the overall mixed-use district and saying, how do we best integrate commercial and residential? How do we best buffer, if you will, properties which are outside the district? So the objective, the objective from our point of view is to try to create some sort of energy as it relates to, as it relates to the ability to get commercial development. There's, there've been some challenges on the part of some of the other projects in trying to get a combination of retail and residential on the same parcel. So we, we are taking a look and exploring various alternatives, and this is, this is one of them. And we think in the whole scheme of things that what we are doing is we are trying to address the concept of combining residential and commercial uses within this mixed-use district.
I reserve the right to ask more questions, but I want to open it up to the rest of the board. Kelly, do you want to start?
So I just wanted to go back to that corridor study you were speaking of. Does that take into account a large regional dealer, or does the study take into account what the plan was for that area, small retail and residential?
So what it did, and, and actually, you know, the town traffic consultant could speak to this a lot more directly than I could. It assumed a square, a total square footage of percentage-wise of commercial space. So it didn't necessarily break it down by specific user. It just said, X amount of square... It just said, "X amount of square feet." The Zone A can support X amount of square feet of total commercial use. And we apply a trip generation to that. So, it didn't drill down any further than that. And that's, and that's how a corridor study works anyways, such that it gives you that baseline. And then as the project specifics are known, now that we know the identified users, know hours of operation and whatnot, we will generate the trip distributions on what is known and compare the two. And that's, and that's the, of how the corridor... So, the corridor study is not the answer today, per se. It's the baseline that you work from. If that makes sense.
Sure. Have you looked at other areas on the east side? I'm just curious as to why... Oh, sorry. Have you looked at other areas on the east side? Or have you, why did you select, why is this your hotspot right here? When there's, when you're not near any major highway or anything?
I would say, I could not answer that question.
We can, we can readdress it. But the fact of the matter is, is that companies, companies do have analysis of properties. And they take a look. And their site selection process is mind-boggling relative to how they look at it. A lot of it deals with the proximity of residential rooftops in an area within a certain radius, one mile, three mile, five mile, and everything else. So, it really becomes a question of where does a Costco think they want to go? And I assume you're talking about the Costco primarily relative to that. That having been done, we take a look at the 250 corridor. And, you know, 250 corridor is centrally located.
Okay. If we could just, please, if we could keep our comments.
And is deemed to be, is deemed to be a location which has, which has value and merit. And that's why they, that's why they would have chosen it.
Do they have any data on where it's going to pull from? Like, where does the Brighton location pull from?
The city location adjacent to Brighton is, is right now pulling from a much broader area than we would be talking about here. But, and I don't have the exact numbers. But there are certainly a lot of people in the 14625 area code who are part of, who are Costco members and adjacent areas which are relatively close to here. I don't, they have identified this particular site as one where they think is, is part of their market. And they probably have done that based upon where they are drawing from and seeing that there is a draw on the eastern part of the county.
So, coming in from other counties other than...
No, I said from the eastern part of this county.
Okay. So, for me, I live right down the road. And I have no problem driving 10 minutes to the other location. So, I just, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of why this particular location, if we can get answers as to why they live at this location.
Yeah, why don't we try, why don't we try?
And if you looked at any other areas on the east side of Rochester that is nearer to a main highway?
Why don't we try to get a better narrative and get that back to you in writing?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question.
Bob?
So, your proposal is that the zoning change from mixed-use development to PD plan development, correct?
At this point, that is, that's the primary alternative that we're analyzing. We're taking a look at the mixed-use district itself and see how we fit within that code. There are other vehicles that are available under the town code. But our initial view is that PD rezoning could be the best of those alternatives. But we need to get past a sketch plan stage, no matter how we go about doing that.
Yeah, because if I read through the PD, I have a hard time seeing how this project would fit in with a definition of a PD district. So...
And that would be something that we would have to address in our full application.
Okay.
We appreciate the comment.
Any other questions from the board at the moment? Okay. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the audience. Thank you for your presentation. I have 34 slips of paper. It is five minutes to eight. And so, we're about 90-plus minutes, at three minutes apiece. So, and, oh?
And we'll allow you to queue people up.
Thirty-six.
We'll step back, so that way you have four microphones to queue people up.
So, if we could all cooperate here. And what I'll do is probably call the first two people up. Person one comes up here to your right, my left. Person two comes to my right, your left. And then we'll, we'll keep going from there. If, please, address, just a reminder, address your comments to the board, not to the applicant. State your name and address. And with that, first person, and again, please don't crucify me if I butcher your name. Sue Quackenbush. Is Sue here? In the other room? Okay. And also, on deck, Casey Wagner. So, Sue, if you could come to this table. And Casey, if you could go to this table. And once Sue's finished, you start, and then I'll call up the next person. And we'll motor on through this. All right. Love to hear your comments.
Hi. My name is Sue Quackenbush. I live at 5 Rockbridge Lane in Penfield in Country Club East, which is the development just south of the YMCA. And full disclosure, we are both Costco members and YMCA members. I have four areas of concern. The first is property values. I'm concerned the proposed commercial development will result in the property values of the houses along Route 250 and the housing developments on Route 250 will decline because most suburban dwellers would not choose to live so close to commercial development or on busy roads. My husband built our house 30 years ago. And I can tell you that if he had known that the traffic resulting from the YMCA would happen and that a Costco would be built there, he never would have built there. He wouldn't have built anywhere in the vicinity. As far as decreased property values, I believe that it will also decrease property values in the homes on or off both Atlantic and Wayland as the traffic increases. Obviously, these development plans being approved would really open up Route 250 north from Wayland to future commercial development. And it will become like East Henrietta Road, West Henrietta Road, Jefferson Road, et cetera, where, and Ridge Road, both in Grease and more recently in Webster, where nobody wants to live. Skipping things here, I'm very worried about safety because since the YMCA opened, our neighborhood experienced an exponential increase in traffic going by. By the way, my husband predicted that would happen, and I didn't believe him. And I was wrong. Their one, their 10,000 members, that's their number, not mine, including us, are coming and going all day long and even in the evenings. And when they added the medical on the back of the building, we saw another substantial increase in traffic. Not as much as from the YMCA, but nonetheless, an increase. It is extremely difficult to get out of our neighborhood and make a left-hand turn going north onto 250. And it is a tragic accident waiting to happen. This is before the 750 new housing units get finished at the corner of 250 and Atlantic and before the approved Penfield Heights across the street move in and their daily travel gets added to the roads. And then as far as personal and property safety, we are concerned that Costco will draw people from a very large geographic area, and crime could increase. So, I think the town should look at data on crime before and after a Costco store is planted in a suburban environment. And then everyone is concerned about the traffic loads on the roads. I know that there are 645 parking spaces at the other Costco. And I'm retired, and I go there at all different times. And it is usually extremely full. And getting gas is a nightmare at their gas station's location within the parking lot, which is, excuse me, very problematic. Needless to say, imagine the shopping churn if 500 of those 645 spaces turn over, let's say, every hour, plus all of the very fast turnover of cars just pumping gas. I believe that all those roads will need to be widened to accommodate the increased traffic, not just immediately where the stoplights will be added, but also beyond that. And the impact of road widening would mean homes on all those four roads will have some of their property taken. The road construction would be a nightmare for everyone in the area while it's being done. Not just Route 250 will turn into a traffic corridor, but Wayland and Atlantic also will. We already know that people are using...
We've had our three minutes.
Okay? And it's going to cost all of us money for the federal taxes to pay for all this. State, federal, local taxes. Somebody has to pay for the construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Casey Wagner. And on deck, Dennis Stratton? Stratton? Okay, if you could come up here. And Casey, you're on. If we can keep it to three minutes, it'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Casey Wagner. I am a resident on Route 250, 1892 Fairport, Nine Mile Point Road. Imagine teaching a young kid that address. That's fantastic. So, I am about .3 miles away from the proposed development on Route 250. So, I'm going to talk about a few big rocks. Though the previous speaker had talked about these, I want to kind of go a little bit further. So, first, I want to talk about infrastructure. Our infrastructure is not designed to support this kind of traffic. We already have through traffic through here, plus attractive traffic to YMCA, the new residents that are being built. And if you drive down that road at peak hours, whether it's 10 o'clock Costco peak hours or any other time, you're talking about having difficulty, not just in that direct corridor, but at Wayland intersection. If you're coming from 104 down south, though it's a different town, at the Webster Main Street intersection, we're talking about, we have single-lane highways that are our main corridors on this side of Penfield. 250, Wayland, Atlantic. The next one over, 441, running east and west, is the next double-lane throughway. So, that can support commercial business. But when it comes to these different main streets going east into the 250 or west into the 250 or north and south on 250, we're talking about single-bound traffic. Home values, devaluation. There's research that shows when you put these type of commercial use into the area, you have a U-shaped valuation happening. Those closer to the actual big box or the big commercial use are devalued. Those who go further away, their values may increase because of the attraction to, hey, a nearby commercial space. As a resident, that would be right in the core of that U. The devaluation of my home is a very big concern. Living experience. We were drawn to this area because of the green space. I grew up on the west side and moved to the east side because of this experience. I do have a family. We live on a main road, but it is not a commercial space. It is a residential space. So, if you try to widen these roads, as indicated before, we would look at losing our property. There are sidewalks on our side of the road. What would happen with those sidewalks? And the safety of using said sidewalks if we need to widen that road. It is difficult to get on my driveway. Oftentimes during peak hours, I have to turn right just to go south. So, I have to turn around to go south. And then going to security, Penfield does not have its own police force. So, what does that mean for the Monroe County Sheriff's Department that also has to oversee another big-box location to help with security on the east side? That is all.
You made it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We have Sean Dubois coming up on deck over here. And Dennis Stratton, you are a go. Thank you.
My name is Dennis Stratton. And I've been, my wife and I have been residents of this town for 59 years. And I live right on Atlantic Avenue between Barrett and Five Mile Line Road. At one time, way back, they were talking about making a bypass of the two curves on Wayland or on Atlantic. But that was long a big lie. To get the state to do anything with this road, I've lived, like I say, I've lived here 59 years, that they've probably redone that road about three times in all those years. Two, last year, they decided to pave part of it. And what did they do? They paved it up to Cultural. And then they come down with the rubble thing, down through the middle of the damn road. And you want, you want to listen to that all day? No. Now, we've got 800 units, like you said, on the corner of 250. That's the minimum of 1,200 cars that's going to come down Atlantic or go 250. People coming from other parts of the county to go to Costco, whether you have to come through the Village of Fairport from some directions, the Village of Webster from other directions, Atlantic Avenue, as that lady said, Wayland Road. 441 is a mess as it is. We have a lot of traffic, and it's very slow up through our corners. And it's been like that forever, and we live with it. But now, is Costco, is that, that's a commercial property. Am I correct? Is that a commercial property?
Is what a commercial property?
The Costco building they want to put up.
Yes.
Okay. So, how does that go into a mixed-use area? I get the mixed use, okay? They got the apartments next to the Y. And now, I didn't even know that they approved something across the street. But that's, I have nothing wrong with people living here, okay? But can you imagine all the people are going to come off of 590 on Browncroft, which turns into Atlantic to get to Costco? Comes out, or if they come out Browncroft, they'll cop up Wayland to go another way, okay? And or 441, who knows? Plank Road, who knows? Everybody's going to, you know, they're going to come from Wayne County. I mean, I just don't get it. You know, what is this, a trade-off? If we give them mixed use and do all this on across the street, and they can build a commercial building across on the other side?
Well, to kind of answer your question on the mixed use, mixed-use district is a combination of residential, like a live-work-play.
And what?
Like a live-work-play type concept?
I don't see Costco as a live-work-play, but that's okay.
There is a, a combination of commercial and residential and recreational use. So, the question, and we're all asking the same question. So...
So, in other words, they would have somehow...
I certainly can't answer that question today. This is a sketch plan, and they're asking us to make those...
So, wouldn't the, not the planning board, but the other board, wouldn't they have to approve the commercial part of that? The zoning part?
As, as the sketch plan application currently stands, the way they've submitted is that they're proposing that the property be rezoned into a planned development district. That would be a decision made by the town board.
Right.
We would be responsible for site plan approval.
Oh, because the way I read it, that's a, to me, that's a piece of commercial property, Costco. Okay? Okay?
Correct. But as I said, the mixed-use district has commercial property.
They just came out and said they wanted to build, no, I'm not done yet. If they came out and they wanted to build just a Costco there, would you say, okay? No, I don't think so. So what we understand is, and what we've heard through the town, is that Wickham is willing to sell that property over there so that they can build these apartments and make us feel good, so that they can build a Costco across the street. And then, I'd like to know is, after Costco, there's still quite a ways to Atlantic Avenue. What happens to all that? And I see that on that site plan, that stupid site plan they've got there. That's, that's my problem, okay? If not only that, as I live, like I said, I live at Atlantic Avenue. We don't, well, we finally did get sidewalks. That's only because some rich subdivision was able to get the town to put in sidewalks, okay? And then they built apartments on the, there was houses on the corner of Barrett Road and Atlantic, okay? This is fine, okay? But the traffic is unbelievable. You've got 100 trucks a day going out to the Dolomite because they shut, they had to shut down the quarry over in Howard Road. So there's 100 trucks at least going by out of that. Instead of going to the one on Wayland, they go to the one out there. Supposedly, it's cheaper, okay? That's my thing. And are we going to have, is this ever going to be put to the town to vote on or not? To the people? Or we have to rely on you, or the town board, to make our decision for us? Is that a yes or a no?
Well, I can't, it, if someone applies for something and-
Okay, I get it.
They meet all the regulations.
They haven't, but, I mean, he's got this preliminary-
So, but, keep in mind, this, and I want to make this clear, this is a sketch plan. It's a concept.
But I'm trying to nip it in the bud.
You know, it's, we're, we're seeing this and hearing this for the first time, just like all of you. So-
Well, I know you've heard it before, but I mean, otherwise you wouldn't have all this. But I understand, okay? The idea is, I know it's just preliminary, but I'm preliminary too, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we have Sean here and on deck Kara Vider. Okay, Sean, if you want to go ahead?
Okay, Sean Dubois, 7 Chevhill Circle, Penfield. All right. So I wanted to get started by saying, let me just get the right distance here. Listening to BME talk, I heard a lot of numbers about parking spots and square footage. I didn't hear a lot about patronage of the stores. So again, I'm not a mathematician here, but you can Google these numbers online and pretty quickly determine what the actual numbers of patronage will be for like your average Costco store. So as per Forbes 2022, 3 million people a day go to Costco across the US. So our share of the 3 million, if we were to build a Costco, would be 4,600 people every single day. So just to kind of further quantify that, is that's 9% of the population of Penfield, going to one store every single day, and they don't open until 10:00. So, so that's a shorter distribution of hours spread throughout the day. So just attempting to try and quantify some of these numbers for, for the panel here. And then, going further, that 4,600 cars, so all the, it's on 250, which is DOT, state route. All those numbers are published online, you can see all that stuff. So at 250 and 441, it's about 14,400 cars on average go by there a day. So if you're multiplying that against what the number I just provided, that's a 32% increase in traffic for one store, not even counting all the other multiple buildings that they were mentioning. So again, attempting to provide some, some numbers in relation to how many people will actually be using the roads. And then, just, the 4,600, I mean, I grew up in Caledonia, that's more than the population of Caledonia. That's a lot of people coming every single day. It's like 500 people an hour going through the store. And then, just kind of bringing you back to the, this current zoning of the area, so mixed-use development zoning description mentions on the Penfield website, "It encourages less reliance on the automobile for the daily lives of residents." Well, that's a good thing, because I'm going to hate my car after I experience 4,600 additional cars a day when I'm living a stone's throw away from this location. And then, when you couple that in with 1,000 parking spaces involved in this project, just, again, attempting to help us understand the scale of the project that we're discussing right now. And then, just kind of in closing, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you all. I just say, and again, based on the questions that you guys have put forth, it sounds like you're, you know, willing and able to do your due diligence here to make sure that we're fully understanding what the scale, scope of this project is before we approve anything. Thank you.
Thank you. A little bit out of sorts with all these slips of paper. So we have Kara and on deck John Gatz. If John Gatz could come up here. And Kara, you're up.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Kara Vider. I live at 1698 Kennedy Road, Webster. My family and I go to Wickham Farms at their new location, and we've had a really fun time, and I can't wrap my head around doing that when this is right across the street. It completely changes so much. So I could sit up here and I could talk about the environmental impact, and I could talk about the traffic impact, and I could talk about homeownership values, and I could talk about why I live in Penfield, and it's because I don't want to live near a big-box store. We could have made that choice. But I'm going to talk about something a little bit different. I'm a scientist, and as a scientist, I'm obligated to disclose any conflicts of interest when sharing my research and studies. So with respect, my question is, who exactly benefits financially from this project of rezoning for the Costco project? Is a list of investors available for the public, meaning those of us impacted by this development? Are there any conflicts of interest between those who need to require approval and those who grant it? In other words, would those who can approve this plan help people they know make money at the expense of our rural environment? So just simply, I guess I would just like to be able to follow the money trail. Thank you.
We have John and on deck Judy Dobles.
Thank you and good evening. My name is John Gatz. I reside at 5 Center Court Lane with my wife. We've resided in the town of Penfield and truly enjoy living here over the past 25 years, raised our family here. I wanted to thank the board, and Mr. Chairman, thank you, because you asked the ultimate question, the elephant in the living room, and thanked the board, because quite frankly, this doesn't fit, in my personal opinion, or frankly, my professional opinion, either mixed-use or planned development, as it sits right now. It's that simple. I also want to thank my neighbors and my friends and community members who are here. And I do have a number of things that I will point out, but not tonight, based upon some of the information that we were just provided today from the applicants. I will be filing or providing some information to this board via email for record purposes for questions that you can consider. I think it's more efficient, quite frankly. The other matter I have is just a question. The applicants were discussing the 250 corridor story, study. Is that avail, I did not see that, I admit, I was trying to find something like that online. Is that available on our town?
That should be available on the website.
Yeah, I believe it's on, on the town of Penfield website. Okay, and I'll check with the town tomorrow just to get that, because I do think that's important since it's being referenced so much. And thank you. I'll defer so my friends and neighbors have more time.
Thank you. On deck Anthony Perron. And Judy?
Thank you. My name is Judy Dobles, and I live at 1886 Harris Road. And I've lived there for 34 years with my husband, right after we got married. And I wanted to say that I've read the 2023 Comprehensive Plan from Penfield, and I actually very much like it. I like how it was written and how clear people are about our goals, what we want to achieve, and really how we want Penfield to, to be as a community. And I like that. In my career, I've been a finance executive and worked on a lot of large projects. So my purpose today is to just give some questions to the board that I would like you to consider as you're looking at the project, because these are things that I think would be important for making your decision. So the first thing is, could you describe, and I'm not asking you to do it now, but this is something to think about, how the addition of a big-box store will impact the small businesses of Penfield that I depend on? And what I think about is, I like the small various businesses, and what I have seen historically is when a big-box comes in, a lot of those businesses are closed. So they talk about increasing employment, that they're going to bring jobs, but my question is really, what will be shuttered because we have a big-box store? The second thing is, the second thing is, I do believe that there will be infrastructure required to accommodate a big-box store, and who specifically will pay for it? The second thing, or the third thing is really, buildings should have architectural detailing that is interesting and when appropriate reflective of Penfield's architectural heritage. Will a big-box store change their architecture to fit our landscape? Will the big-box store increase the noise and light pollution? And how will a big-box store contribute to helping Penfield remain peaceful and attractive? And then lastly, well, two things quickly. Could you describe the tax abatements and relief that Penfield would plan to extend to a big-box store, both verbally and numerically? And lastly, with the continued rise of online shopping, why would another brick-and-mortar big-box store, why would that be a benefit to our community? Thank you.
Okay. So on deck, is it Donna, is it Ecker? Okay. And ready to go is Anthony Perron. And you know what, before you start, thank you, everyone, for working with this, with this. This is working out great.
It's a nice system.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Anthony Perron. I live at 1935 Dublin Road. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for eliciting those non-answers from the applicant moments ago. The sketch plan for a Costco warehouse and gas station has oddly been written with respect to two different zoning districts, but by the letter of the town code is qualified for neither. On the record, at yesterday's town board meeting, I made clear that the proposed development is in no way fitting for a mixed-use district, despite the developer's deceptive attempt to appeal to mixed-use principles. Since the sketch plan is also, by its own admission, not a mixed-use development, I will not further belabor that point. The sketch plan states the developer's intention to apply for rezoning of the site to a planned development district. Rezoning is the purview of the town board, not the planning board. For the developer to go before the planning board to argue their plan's applicability to a zoning district that does not exist at the site in question seems premature. At best, this is a waste of the planning board's time. Or perhaps worse, it's done in a bad-faith attempt to subvert due diligence. Nevertheless, consider the sketch plan with respect to planned development districts as defined in the town code. I won't call out my citations for the listener's benefit, but they're in here, so for the record. Commercial uses in these districts are to be scaled to serve the residents of that district or the immediately surrounding area. The sketch plan explicitly states that Costco is meant to serve all of Penfield and its surroundings. Those scales don't match. Planned development is meant to offer wider choices of environment and facilities throughout the town. We already have our choice of parking lots and gas stations. Planned development is meant to offer more convenience of location. The site is a mile up a two-lane road from one of the most congested intersections in town. Its other approaches are residential farm roads, Harris, Dublin, Wayland, Atlantic, et cetera, that appear on maps at least as far back as 1858. These roads predate cars and electricity. They cannot safely accommodate Costco levels of traffic. I do not call that convenience. Planned development also calls for the development in harmony with the comprehensive plan. I cannot imagine less harmony than explicitly removing the mixed-use zoning district that stands as a central pillar of that comprehensive plan. The issues I cite are not technical matters of setbacks, lighting design, that can be fixed in the course of our well-defined planning process. They are fundamental incompatibilities of the very essence of this development with either applicable zoning district. The plan has no future, and to even consider the site for plan approval would be arbitrary and capricious.
Okay. On deck, we have Lisa Marcello. And ready to go, Donna Ecker?
Thank you and good evening. My name is Donna Ecker, and I live at 1777 Sweets Corners Road. I've lived in my home for 44 years. My topic I want to address is the Sweets Corners Road neighborhood. The land next to me is growing soybeans. Down the road a bit is a cornfield. Across from that, a wheat field. Go up the hill on Gloria Drive, there is a quaint old cemetery dating back centuries ago. Sometimes on Sweets Corners Road, you have to give way to a tractor or a combine, but that's okay. Of late, it has become quite difficult to make a left-hand turn off of Sweets Corners Road onto 250. I can't even imagine what that will be like with a big-box complex. My husband built our home so that it could be located in Penfield. Good schools, good neighbors, good space, good town planning. This proposed plan does not fit that. It seems to me to be contrary to the master comprehensive plan established just one year ago. I'm also perplexed that this is being considered in this area when you have so much vacant commercial space at Panorama Plaza. I want to be brief, so I will offer this to the board only. Take a drive down Sweets Corners Road. Enjoy the soybean fields and the corn. Take in the peace and the quiet. Then get into your car and drive to Henrietta Brighton to the Costco complex. Pull into the parking lot and take in the traffic, the noise, the pollution, and the big-box atmosphere. Please take seriously what this plan will do to the future of Penfield, and don't allow what we have as a community to disappear. Thank you for listening.
Okay. On deck Johanna Cooper. Is Johanna here? Is Johanna here? If someone can find Johanna, have her come up to go to that table. And Lisa, you can get started.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Marcello. I'm the president and CEO of Episcopal Senior Life Communities. I'm here this evening representing the residents, family members, and employees of Ashley Woods, located at 400 YMCA Way. Ashley Woods is an assisted living and memory care community that provides care for 70 older adults. Ashley Woods is located within Penfield Square. Penfield Square has become an active neighborhood where residents and community members can safely enjoy green space, walking paths, picnics, music and car shows, and other activities. Our vision for Penfield Square fit perfectly into Penfield's master and comprehensive plan. Over several months, we worked with the town board and with the planning board, I remember many of you from that experience, to ensure that Penfield Square was consistent with the spirit and standards outlined in the Mixed Use Development Manual and requirements of the Mixed Use Development Zoning Ordinance. A large store such as Costco does not seem to fit into the spirit of the mixed-use development plan, as was applied to our project. It certainly is not small residential or small commercial, not to mention the massive increased traffic that, so it just doesn't embrace the spirit of neighborhood, which is what we have created at Penfield Square. With that said, I am mostly concerned about and opposed to the development of an access road to this major commercial project running directly behind Ashley Woods. Many of our residents have mobility challenges and use assistive devices for ambulation. The implementation of a busy access road and the corresponding increased volume and speed of traffic unrelated to the neighborhood purpose will negatively and dangerously impact the safety and well-being of all, but especially of the residents. My concern is that our residents and their families will not feel safe and will therefore be restricted in their ability to participate in the community outdoor life offered at Penfield Square. Finally, we were intentional in the environment we created and that followed the town planning board's lead and direction. We had no reason to anticipate a large commercial project would be built next door, given our experience in planning Penfield Square as a mixed-use development. On behalf of the residents of Ashley Woods, the gardens, and the neighborhood we have established, I am opposed to this project as presented. Thank you.
Okay, nobody found Johanna? All right, I'll set her thing aside. So I'm going to call two people. One, Harry Birch would be number one, if you could go here. And then Eileen Anderson, if you could be on deck. Is Eileen? I think she's okay. Okay.
Yes, Harry Birch, 16 Saybrook Drive. I've been a resident there for 30 years. And I've certainly seen the traffic that we see on Route 250 increase incredibly. I'm not particularly in favor of this development, but if they're going to do it, there are certain things that we do need to consider. Given that the DOT has failed in some respects to provide adequate traffic, for example, at the YMCA, there is no dedicated right-turn lane. So right now, anyone backing up behind that usually takes the median and goes into the oncoming lane of traffic to pass slower right-turning vehicles. Given that, we need to ensure that this plan, that includes dedicated right-turn lanes into the Penfield Center Road, or wherever that is there, the gas station and the main intersection there, on the southbound side, as well as dedicated right-turn lanes into Sweets Corners and into the east-side commercial properties. I'm glad to see that there's going to be signaling there, but we need to make sure that Sweets Corners is also provided with dedicated left-straight and right-turn lanes as well. Finally, I'd like to request that, and I don't see him on this plan, but given that the town is trying to move towards more green type of transportation options, that we should at least ensure that there's two EV stalls in each of the six garages, that the commercial buildings on the east side should have EV charging as well, and that Costco should have at least eight to 12 EV charging stalls. And probably for the three-story proposed buildings, they need to have some on-street EV charging as well. That's all I had for comments.
Thank you. Okay, on deck, we have Patricia, is it Donals? Donal, okay. And Eileen?
My name's Eileen Anderson. I live at 50 Edenfield Road. I've been a Pennsfield resident for 31 years. And I can attest to the traffic on 441 and Atlantic Avenue, both mornings and evenings, although I don't work anymore. I don't see how those roads can handle additional traffic from Costco, but that's not, I agree with all the other speakers that were opposed to this. My concern is that this is not mixed-use development. This is not planned development. This should not be going to the planning board until that issue is resolved. And there is no way a big-box store belongs there, especially a Costco. I've been to Costco. I'm not a member, but I know the traffic it generates. And they never mention the gas pumps and the trucks to deliver the supplies. It's frightening to me, the amount of traffic this will generate. And I bike on, not on 250 anymore because it's too dangerous. I take Jackson Road. But Jackson Road could get congested too from this project, because a lot of cars go down there to avoid 250. I walk to the Y. How am I supposed to cross 250 with the one light, you know, and then I have to walk all the way around? It makes no sense that this could be long where they're putting it. And I just hope that our leadership in Penfield takes a stand and stops this thing before anybody puts a lot of work into it, because we don't need to know what's happening here.
Thank you. Okay, Amy Burgess is on deck. And we have Patricia.
Patricia.
Patricia. Donals?
Yep.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for their time tonight.
Oh yeah, if you could make sure you're speaking into the microphone.
I just want to thank everybody for their time tonight. My name's Patricia Donals. My husband, two small children, and I live at 26 Edenfield Road. That's .4 miles from the proposed location. We moved here in late 2021. We did plan for this to be our forever home. It's really funny how that feeling changed as soon as we heard about the proposed Costco. Since then, I've read the master comprehensive plan and the Mixed Use Development Manual. What I found is there's virtually no correlation between what the town diligently planned and put in writing and the proposal of this site. So I'm wondering what's changed. The MUD manual has a heavy emphasis on accessibility, walkability, connectivity, and it even states, and I quote, "A bicycle-friendly environment with established bicycle lanes and street connections that promotes the use of bicycles over automobiles." So I'm wondering, who's walking to Costco? Who's riding a bike anywhere near a Costco? Who is stopping at the mom-and-pop shop or restaurant when they go to Costco? I don't know about you, but when I go to Costco, I go get my bulk diapers, I get my bulk meat, and I go home. I don't go anywhere else. And I am a Costco member. I just don't agree with this placement. In this MUD manual, it also mentions that the New York State Route 250 land use analysis recommendation points out traffic concerns. Wouldn't a Costco only exploit that concern? Let's talk about the drive to Costco. I know that we've all talked about this, but I do think I have a little bit of a different perspective here. Costco's 20 minutes away. We can all spare 40 minutes every couple of weeks when it comes at the cost of adding how many minutes to our daily commute. My children have to be picked up from daycare no later than 5:30. I get out of work at 5:00. How am I going to get there, by 5:30, if a Costco goes into town? I'd like to point out that the person who started the petition in favor of Costco here lives in Webster. You can Google his address. And you want to know what's funny? If you Google the directions from his address to the existing Costco, it's quicker than going to Wickham Farms. And that's without all the added traffic. So why is he so invested in this Costco? All right, I'm going to summarize. I'd like to touch on the comprehensive plan of Penfield, which highlights the following: protecting residents' quality of life, addressing excessive noise levels, light pollution, light pollution, and poor property maintenance, wanting Penfield to be a peaceful and attractive place to live. At the end of the day, Penfield needs to hold itself accountable. We need to maintain our standards in order to foster the community that Penfield is. We should not let coercion by a big corporation change the makeup of our town and what makes it such a beautiful place to live. Please don't waste a tremendous opportunity to make this place a beautiful community. If you approve this Costco, I promise you, my family and I, we will move away. No one's going to want to drive 35 to 40 minutes to get home when it should only take 15. No one will want the view of the stars replaced with light pollution, or the sound of crickets replaced by tankers. The stillness, the quiet, the beauty that surrounds our neighborhood will all be a memory, and so will these residents. Please hear us when we say we don't want a Costco here.
Okay, on deck, Tom Moynihan. And Amy Burgess?
Yes. My name is Amy Burgess. I live at 869 Wayland Road. I've lived in Penfield for 25 years. When my husband and I were looking to purchase our first home, we landed in Penfield, in large part due to the suburban and rural environment, offering sensible retail amenities, yet maintaining a smaller-town feel. Unfortunately, over the years, we've seen a number of businesses close and/or move out, leaving existing properties and structures vacant. And yet, the town continues to greenlight new developments, even while existing storefronts and structures sit empty and bare. As others have said, there's an existing Costco location 15 minutes from Penfield's town center. While we certainly have issues of vacancies, the redundancy of business tenant considerations in and around this town is, at times, also a bit maddening. As I've witnessed some of the many arguments this proposal has sparked, specifically on social media or petitions promoted by the Wickhams, I've seen a number of people voicing that they are in favor of this project being approved, who actually reside in neighboring towns and whose opinions frankly shouldn't mean anything here. Caliber Commercial Brokerage identified current traffic counts at 250 and Atlantic Avenue as nearly 20,000 vehicles per day on average. 441 east of 250 sees average daily traffic of more than 25,000 vehicles. With the proposed location being in the middle of what is currently a rural-type landscape in Penfield, not close to any major highways, this traffic count is likely to see an exponential increase, adding more stress and congestion to roadways that are already nearing or at capacity. In your own comprehensive town plan, you identify generally good traffic operating conditions within Penfield with a few exceptions. These exceptions include stretches of Browncroft Boulevard, Five Mile Line Road, and New York State Route 441, all of which would likely be common routes for those west and south of our town to travel to this new development. With a number of arterial roads being owned and maintained by New York State for the condition of said routes, we are at the mercy of the state DOT. I don't know how often you've traveled the stretch of 250 between the gymnastics training center and Wayland Road, but if this hellish nightmare potholes is any indication of what we can expect for the conditions from increased traffic that would occur as a result of this new development, I don't have much faith. Also, from your own comprehensive plan, you highlight Shadow Pines. You heard directly from your residents on a large scale, and voters overwhelmingly approve the purchase, 80% of voters to be specific, demonstrating our desire for land in this area to be preserved. And yet, here we are again. This property along 250 is currently zoned for mixed use. In your comprehensive plan, you highlight a study for this particular property with specific recommendations of current and potential land uses here. To quote the study, it recommends a hamlet concept and emphasizes creating a note of development largely focused on agribusiness, with some potential for niche retail and/or hamlet-style housing mixed in. Costco fails to fall under any component of this definition. Even with the rezoning being requested, the town's own definition of mixed use, inclusive of the planned development zoning, is a variety of residential development blended with community uses and smaller-scaled, neighborhood-oriented retail services and other commercial. Furthermore, the town specifies that one particular use should not dominate a mixed-use property. In this proposal, the Costco building designated parking area and gas station would encompass 21.24 acres of the 51.3 acres in discussion. That's more than 41% of the total space being designated to one commercial entity. I don't know about you, but I would consider this overwhelmingly dominating the use of the area in question. If the town is willing to bend the rules and blatantly disregard any plans or requirements you've specified for a large developer and big-box store with deep pockets, how can we trust you to uphold any decisions as they relate to the future of our town? So as representatives of the Penfield Town residents, I ask that you deliver the consistency and integrity that this town needs and say no to Costco.
Okay, we have Donna Spinella on deck. And just keep in mind, we, what time is it? Is it?
8:45.
8:45? So we're on speaker number 15 out of 36. So if we could, some of the topics that have already been discussed, we all know they're there. So if we can just keep that in mind.
Okay, well, you two brought up some good points. Why here? Why now? And they didn't have any answers. I mean, there's no traffic study. There's no study as to what Costco's figures are, as to how many people they expect to draw, or where they expect to draw them from. So they're kind of wasting our time. They're here unprepared, I say, you know? And every Costco...
You're correct, but it is a sketch plan. It's not an actual application.
Right, okay. But every Costco that I might, I go to, I live in Florida half the time, and the Costcos there are all right off the expressway. There's three of them in Sarasota area. One's on Tamiami Trail, which is like a big boulevard, huge, six lanes wide. My sister lives in St. Louis, outside of, Costco's right off the expressway. My daughter lives in Thornton, Colorado. The Costco there, right off the expressway. And in Colorado, they build the roads first and then put the Costco in. So we need, if you're going to do traffic, do the traffic first. Do the roads first, if you know this is coming. Not like, jeez, you know, we build all this stuff and now the traffic is horrible. Well, we need to expand, and we have to go through all the pains of the construction with traffic. Do it first. If you're going to do it, do it first. Otherwise, don't do it at all. And, you know, this is a once-in-a-lifetime, really, for a generational move here. If you put this Costco in, you know, you're not going to put the genie back in the bottle. Because once this is here, you know, and Costco, just like every other business, is going to go out of business, just like Sears, just like the movie theaters, the malls. I mean, not by their own volition, just things change. And what happens is that now you're stuck with this building, and you're going to have to find another. that now you're stuck with this building, and you're going to have to find another use for it. And it's a big box, and it's a parking lot. And what, you know, you're going to have to find someone to do something. Either that or rip it out and start over. So that's it. I'll cede my time to someone else. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Okay, on deck, we have Deborah Davis. Is Deborah here? Oh, great. Okay. Donna?
Hi, my name is Donna, my name is Donna Spinella, and my address is 39 Scarborough Park. I come here with a kind of distinct perspective on this project, based on having spent five years on the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Committee. Spent a lot of Tuesday evenings in this room with Doug. The 2010 Comprehensive Plan called for mixed-use development zoning specifically for this area, for this stretch of Route 250 in Penfield. The 2017 Mixed Use Development Manual then fleshed it out, and the 2023 Plan then resoundingly confirmed everything that was described in 2010 and 2017. And by mixed use, I mean real mixed use, not some cherry-picked, sort of self-serving interpretation of mixed use like we've heard earlier tonight. So I have a question. If the town's staff, residents, and all the experts associated with the 2010 Plan, and everybody associated with the 2023 Comprehensive Plan, and all of the experts brought in to help craft the manual in 2017, which included state, regional, and county agencies, if everybody agreed that this was the right thing for this area, then why should we believe that a for-profit developer suddenly has a better idea than all those people who have a bona fide commitment to the betterment of Penfield as a town, and who had a cumulative expertise shared over years and years, but as recently as last year? So I urge everybody in this room, especially you folks on the planning board and town board members whom I've seen here tonight, to ask themselves this one question. What rational person, unless they had a big financial stake in this project, could possibly condone the travesty of rezoning this area and the utter perversion of the entire mixed-use concept?
So I, I do want to say something. David Broder is on deck. This is maybe the second or third time that I've heard some sort of innuendo about financial interests or something like that. I can state categorically that myself, and I don't know of any board member, whether it's the planning board, or the town board, or a town staff member, that has any type of financial interest in this, or really any other, project that comes before us. If we typically, if there is a conflict of interest, you know, we have engineers on this board that work for engineering firms. They, if, if their firm is a consultant or is actually doing that application, they will recuse themselves. That is a normal thing that happens. So it's, frankly, it's insulting and offensive to me to be accused of that. I make 3,400 bucks a year being this chairman of this planning board. My family, all my friends, think I'm freaking insane to do this. So I care as much about this town as you do, and everybody here does too. So please don't accuse us of this crap. Because it's not true.
I need, I need to clarify. I need to clarify that I was not accusing anyone of you or anyone on the town board. I'm talking about the developers, the people who own that land, who can profit exponentially from what, whatever they paid for it. Not you, and not the town board. I have tremendous respect for all of you. And I know you have a very hard job, and you get paid peanuts to do it, and take time away from your family. So I'm sorry for the misinterpretation of my words.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay.
Me?
Deborah.
Thank you.
You're on.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Davis. I live on Corwin Road. I grew up in Penfield, and I moved back here to raise my own family. When I heard about Costco coming here, I was very concerned. And after hearing the two gentlemen speak tonight, I'm even more concerned. They are citing a traffic study that did not include Costco in the plan, so it has absolutely no value. And they also have no idea why Costco selected this area to build in, and it seems there should have been some research into other areas. So I didn't have a lot of faith in what they said and what that holds for us. Also, the letter of intent that they submitted states that they want this to become the focal point of Penfield, and I thought that showed a vast misunderstanding of what we want in Penfield. We don't want a focal point of a Costco. That's not what our town is about. There is, the loss of green space for wildlife is a tragedy, basically for a huge parking lot with some buildings put in it. But, and I know people have talked about the traffic. I want to address that somewhat. All of Costco people said they would fix the traffic, but how they'll fix it is by widening roads, adding more roads, and just destroying the, the smaller roads like Wayland and Atlantic and Jackson that lead to this place. The only four-lane road nearby is 441, which is already a disaster and can't handle the traffic that it has. And it's not even the shoppers coming in. It will be all the trucks bringing inventory in constantly. So there'll be so much truck traffic coming in, and that's a danger to the residential nature of this town. We've raised our children here. We've bought houses here because it's a safe place to raise kids. It has green space. It has a commitment to green space. And all I can say is, please do not let this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on deck, we have, is it Amy or Ami Notice? Ami. Okay. And David, you're go.
Okay, thank you. Dave Broder, Caribport, Penfield, New York, in the Willow Pond Way area. Very nice to see you guys again. AJ, Terry, Bob, Kelly, Jim. It's only been a short month. Thank you for all you do. I'd like to spend my three minutes. The Costco development is not the only proposed development in our area, trying to get zoning changes, which would allow developers to build something that's really unwanted and detrimental. I'd like to take a moment to call everyone's attention to a massive 84-unit apartment project that's proposed for the Willow Pond Way area. This area was originally part of the Willow Pond Plan Development District.
Hey, David.
Yeah?
I don't really want to cut you off, but I have to cut you off. We have to talk about this particular application. If you have something to say about this particular sketch plan, you're more than welcome. The, that, that sketch plan, if it comes back, there'll be plenty of opportunities to address that.
Okay. So I'm, I'm kind of glad you brought that up. The Willow Pond Development Public Discussion is now apparently on the agenda for August 22nd. So...
We will be discussing what we put in the sketch letter for that.
Okay, gotcha. You know, I, it appears that the residents have not been properly informed of the date change. I, I think it'd be best if this discussion and meeting is tabled again and moved to the first section or work section of next month. As of today even, on the Penfield.org website, Property Under Review, the next board meeting is still scheduled for August, August 8th, the, the discussion of the Willow Pond Way section. However, according to the agenda, this has been tabled and moved to August 22nd. The information has not been updated. When most people want to research the Willow Pond Way project, they go to Projects Under Consideration. Also, under the Property Under Review tab, there's a section for Tabled. The Willow Pond section is not listed as Tabled, so I don't know how anybody would find that out. Also, under Property Under Review, there's no mention of the August 22nd date. The Planning Board section of the Penfield.org site states the Planning Board meets on the second and fourth Thursdays of each month. The first meeting of the month begins with the Work Section at 6:30, which adjourns at 7:00 for a public hearing. And the second meeting of the month is designed as a work session, and apparently not designed for public hearings. The board meets once a month in July, August, November, and December. Again, this is, this is, I know it's not intentional, but it's, it's, nobody understands when the next meeting regarding Willow Pond Way will be. It says there's one meeting in August, as of today. This is the second meeting in August. The, the information on when the Willow Pond Way development meeting, it's basically inaccurate, it's inconsistent, and it's misleading. I, I'm not saying this is deliberate, obviously, but it's in oversight. You've got a lot of work going on with Costco. But I think this should be adjourned or Tabled once again until September, so people, so people can be properly notified. People change their vacation dates to, to be here. Now they got to change, you know, they're not going to be here.
I understand, and we're trying to accommodate as many people as possible to give their feedback on numerous projects. So...
I, I agree. I know, but, but folks have not been notified. It's unclear. It's, it's, nobody's, it's not disclosed. It's not, I mean, it's not updated. You can't try to make, people don't know about it. So you have to...
That, that particular application, frankly, just like this one, is not an actual application. So our process is, we hear this. We, I've been taking notes with every speaker, and others have as well. And we did the same thing a month ago with the Willow Pond presentation. We will be putting a memo together, a letter, that goes out to the applicant with comments that we have and that the public has. So I am sorry that this was postponed until August 22nd. We're true, we're, we're not trying to be, undermine anybody's opportunity here. We're just...
Of course.
Trying to accommodate as many people and as many voices as we can. So thank you for your time. And Ami, it's, you're a go. And I have Daniel Page as on deck.
What do the comments do to be turned into the planning board?
David, seriously. I, please, please. Okay, Daniel Page on deck. Is Daniel here? All right. Somebody can find Daniel Page. He's on deck. And Ami, you're a go.
My name is Ami Notice. I'm part of the 1820, 250 project, the Penfield Heights project. And I'm gonna just tell the board what I feel about this project. While I don't think I'm going to get many applause, I do think it's going to be a little bit of a different view. Right now, we know, we, we went through the approval process, and I know that I've been here many times to go through for our project and making sure it met with the MUD district. Right now, our project hasn't moved forward, and a big reason for that was an issue that we have, and also Penfield Square has, is that part of the MUD district is to put commercial in here, and it's just frankly really hard. I know a couple speakers came up here today to talk about some commercial spaces that are empty, and we know that from experience. Talking to brokers, it's hard to find commercial tenants to come here, which is what really the intent of the MUD district, especially the high-density part, is, to have residential as well as commercial. So we feel that putting a central area where there is some attractive commercial will help the rest of the MUD district get commercial, and therefore, we are in favor of this, this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, has anybody found Daniel? All right. So next person, I'll call two. One for on now and one for on deck. David McClurg, you're on now, and Teresa, is it Brel, is on deck. So is David McClurg here? Going once, going twice. Okay. Put him to the side. Teresa, Teresa Brel? Okay. Wow, we're motoring through these now. Amy Rannieri? And Nancy, is it Tone? So if Nancy's not here, just two seconds, Amy. Oh, okay, good. Good, good, good. She's on deck. Amy?
Hi, my name is Amy Rannier. I live at 58 Edenfield Road and have been a Penfield resident for 22 years. Yesterday, during the town board meeting, public participation session, petitions with 1,487 signatures to date from actual Penfield residents were presented for the town to reconsider the proposed location of Costco. I will point out that all of these signatures had addresses listed, so that they can be verified, with the vast majority of actual Penfield residents. The petition circulating in favor of this project does not require any addresses to prove where they live. In fact, they could live anywhere in the world, and no one can verify that. As I went door-to-door speaking with residents, common comments resounded with issues that have been brought up, like traffic, safety, infrastructure, and environmental concerns. Many said if I wanted to live in Henrietta or Greece, I would have moved there. They said I moved to Penfield to enjoy life, raise my kids in a town where there isn't big-box growth. They said I don't mind driving a few extra minutes for amenities not located in Penfield. Another common comment was, I thought this was mixed use. Why are they consider making this area more commercial? I was a member of the Mixed Use Development District Steering Committee for Route 250. We spent many meetings discussing what the vision for the town was for this corridor. There was much discussion about building multi-use buildings with housing, smaller retail space, connected green space, walking paths, and arboretums. We worked with paid outside consultants from Georgia to help create the true, or the mixed-use manual the town has approved. At these meetings, I know we asked the town on at least three different occasions if big-box stores would ever be part of this manual. The town responded each time with the answer no. We did ask for that question to be documented on the record to protect the intent of MUD. Much time and thought went into creating a comprehensive plan and a mixed-use manual, which have been adopted only a year ago. The town has not given these plans sufficient time or planning to even be remotely successful. I believe the town should follow the adopted plans before they agree to any large-scale big-box development. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Nancy?
Yes, Nancy Thon. I live at 1924 Dublin.
One second. We need Natalie Dubois up on deck. Okay, go.
Many people have already commented a lot of my points, so I will just say, from the, the Penfield website, some of our main goals were valuing the high-quality bedroom community and maintaining open space that has agriculture opportunity. This proposal, which I'm obviously opposed to, a bedrooms community would not encourage the excess traffic and the outside-area traffic that the Costco would bring. Another point is, we can't preserve our agricultural base when the agricultural space is what's being targeted for development. And changing a cornfield into a compact space of three-story residential and commercial space is the opposite of achieving that goal. So what I would say is, I'd prefer to wait and see how the Atlantic 250 project works. Will it really be able to be successful with the retail and commercial there, based on the fact of how many empty, as been mentioned before, there are? Just because we have marked these places as mixed use doesn't mean we have to do it now. This could be a five, 10, 15-year plan before some of these places that are marked as mixed use would actually be done that way. I feel like it's a rush. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future with the country, recessions, wars, we never know what's coming. So to plan for these things and get projects started that end up half-finished and not done because the money ran out doesn't make sense. So to me, I'd say, let's go slowly, let's see how the 250 Atlantic one works out before we go forward with anything at the Sweets Corners area.
Okay, Bill Wickham on deck. And Natalie, your turn.
All right. I am Natalie Dubois, and I live at 7 Chevhill Circle in Penfield with my husband and my adorable three children. And they are with the babysitter tonight, so I'm missing out on this. I will tell you, we've heard facts and statistics and all kinds of great points about traffic, but I think what I wanted to convey was what I did to help, you know, bring this voice from the community here. And so I, like Amy, I took it upon myself to take my kids, and they all actually wanted to go door-to-door. And I wanted to meet the Penfield community, and I wanted to find out what, what they thought about Costco. And I'm very open, I'm very honest, I teach that to my children. So I would say for roughly every hundred signatures I got, about 10 people were very open and said, you know, I like Costco. And it wasn't that I don't like Costco, because I am a member, and I enjoy taking my kids there to get bulk items, and they like to get the food samples and gash knows, it's a fun outing. But I didn't choose to move to Henrietta, I didn't choose to move to Greece. I grew up in Webster, and I bought my first house in Webster. And when my husband and I got married, we thought, where do we want to live? And we love Penfield. We trust you guys. Like, I am very appreciative that you're here late. I'm appreciative to this whole community that came out tonight. And it gets heated in here a little bit because I met some good people, Dennis. And Dennis had a great question, can we put this vote to the community? Which I know you guys gotta figure out how you're gonna address all these great questions. But I kind of thought about that 7,000 figure of the community members that showed up for Shadow, Shadow Pines, okay? And those people wanted it to be a green space. And I thought, okay, so we have a zoned area, and if we took those 7,000 people and said, hey, we're going to change the zoning because we have to put Costco somewhere, what would those 7,000 people say? And I honestly think that that would change a lot of people, those stragglers who are on the fence about Costco, I don't think they would want to rezone that space. And I don't think this space should be rezoned for that either. So that's really what I wanted to come up. I had a whole bunch of points, but my gosh, these guys did their homework, I'm very impressed with the community. The only thing I would ask is, there was that study, that corridor study they kept mentioning, do we have the year that was done? I was just curious if, I can't ask them questions, but I was wondering if you had that information? Because I was nervous about the.
Off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that. Do you know?
2023.
2020.
Okay. It didn't accommodate the not-yet-placed housing for across the street on Atlantic that they're building right now, that huge complex?
Include all the mud.
Okay, does it include tenants that are gonna be there?
Well, includes the apartments, the commercial, it was a full build-out of the whole mud, it was taken into account for that study. So that's how the study came, that's how we presented it to the DOT.
Okay. The other thing is, I will tell you that I put myself in my community shoes, I know I'm up on time, so I'm just gonna let, let this be the last thing. But I put myself in the community shoes of going through 441, I actually went door-to-door to every house from 250 on Atlantic to Fast Track. And I pulled into every single one of those driveways, and I met a lot of good people, and it was terrifying. And if I could just give you any advice, is just try pulling one of their driveways, try meeting some of these people, and then try to get out of it. Because it's, it is very scary. You can't walk Atlantic, by all means, and even on 250, my kids and I cannot bicycle to Harris Hill as much as we'd like to because it is terrifying to cross over. So other than that, I appreciate the community, and I love Penfield, so thank you for being here for us.
Thank you. So do we. Okay, on deck, we have Kalpana Parik. It's Kalpana here. Going once, going twice, out in the rotunda. Okay, I'll set that aside. How about Amanda Dake? Okay, you're on deck. Bill Wickham, your turn.
My name is Bill Wickham, I live at 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. I have some prepared remarks, but there's, I don't know if this mic is working, you hear okay? It's good?
I can. Can people in the back hear?
All good? Let's roll.
Okay.
Good turnout tonight. Lots of, lots of passionate opinion, which I'm not surprised at. The one thing I'll just point out to everyone, there's some conversation tonight about Shadow Pines. We talked about, we've talked about the, the mixed-use district and the committee. I said at the time, I also served on the committee, I said at the time, it's important to make sure we're talking about mixed-use and, and projects that can actually work. If we're talking about open space preservation, that's a different conversation entirely. I do own property in the mixed-use district. We've had, we've had plans here before the board before, and the problem has been not enough commercial, too much residential in the former, the former one. And we've seen in the mixed-use projects, there's been difficulty attracting the commercial component, which I know was important in the, in the original concept, because there's not a lot of commercial tax base in the town. Struggling to fill that. The proposal here is certainly different. I think the concept behind it was, you know, high tide raises all ships, so the intent is, with a development like this and the commercial component, it would help to attract some of that to some of the other areas in the, in the mixed-use space. Again, if we're talking about open space, though, different concept, different, different conversation. There is private investment there. It's one thing to say, I like open space, it's another to impose that on, on someone else's property, right? That's not, yeah, that's, that's not really the way it works, so. Respect the opinions of those who are opposed. But again, I think we gotta figure out how mixed-use can work. You know, the last time we, last time I was here and there was this much conversation, so many people in the room, there was outrage over the Eastside Family YMCA being proposed. And we're, I don't know, 10, 12 years into that, I think the vast majority of the.
Almost 20.
Is it that right? Wow, time flies, I'm getting old. I think most of the arguments made against it, the calamity and the ruination of the town of Penfield, hasn't happened. I think in all likelihood, the same would be true on this project, if it moves forward, Someone's, well, I think the, I think the reality is, as I've, as I've been told, the, the membership, the membership target on a Costco club is very similar to the Eastside YMCA. My. Well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have Jim.
I'm Amy Reneri.
Is it A V V I S? Avis? Jim Avis on deck? Out there? Okay, on his way in. And Amanda?
Yep.
Your turn.
So I'm Amanda Dake, I live on Springside Lane. And at the risk of being chastised by my neighbors, I'm here to actually speak out in support of bringing Costco to Penfield. I don't know if this is the right location, but I do want to point out some things that came to mind, just knowing as much about Costco as I do. It will force local stores to price food, gas, pharmacy items, and other items more competitively, which I think would help everybody. It will create good-paying, part-time and full-time jobs, as well as great opportunities for advancement in a company that actually treats their employees well and has excellent benefits. One of the highest-ranked employers again and again on multiple lists. Costco engages and practices towards sustainability that go above and beyond what other retailers do. They donate food, produce, meat, baked goods, et cetera, and even over-the-counter pharmacy items to Feeding America, which coordinates with local food banks, and I know our local food bank has been hurting since COVID with an increase in need every single year. They engage in upcycling programs such as composting produce that can't be sold or donated. They use skylights to reduce energy use. They actually care about the communities that they are in. I've seen multiple news stories where areas that have been devastated by hurricanes or other natural disasters, and you see Costco employees giving out water, redirecting generators to those stores, and giving back to the communities that they are located in. The most important, I think it will force infrastructure updates that are needed to Route 250 at minimum, you know, you'd have to add turn lanes and traffic signals. When Costco builds new locations, they work with the community to improve those roads and minimize impact to some green spaces. I do hope the town collaborates and encourages them to incorporate greener aspects to the store and parking lot, including trees in the design of the parking lot. Also thought about rooftop gardens, there's actually a Costco in Mexico that has this, and it could be the first in the United States if we push for that. So that's something to think about, too, is trying to incorporate greener aspects. You know, other countries are even doing covered parking spaces with pollinator gardens, things like that. We're right on the Monarch Beltway, it would be a great opportunity to do something really unique like that or push for that. So I just wanted to advocate for that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Oh, and can I add that it's really disheartening to see my neighbors act like middle-school students, maybe when someone's opinion does not agree with your own? It's really disheartening. I work in a middle school, and I can say that you act like middle-schoolers tonight, calling out and heckling people, really? Come on.
Okay, Jim?
Yep.
One second, we have Marlene Rogowski on deck. Okay.
Okay, I'm Jim Ellis, I live on Sweets Corners Road. You may have heard that name before. That's the one that's gonna end up right in the Costco. We're in a country, and we live on a peaceful, narrow country road. It's called Sweets Corners Road. And we've been there for over 26 years now, and it's been very peaceful out there. Then Wickham's came along, and we've got the, all the traffic from his area, and it's made of, in the season that they're, they're open, it's very hard to get through, through that area. You put a, put a Costco at the end of that street, along with Wickham Farms, it's a disaster. I don't know how you're, how you're gonna do it. Now, we were really happy when we, when we saw the mixed-use come about, and, because it was, wasn't gonna be commercial properties, and a lot of green space and all that. We love, we love the country, I got five and a half acres there, and we just, we just love it. Luckily, we're over the hill from all, all, all that's going on. But we just don't see how Costco can fit into that. And I'm, I'm really dependent on, I mean, I, I love our street, and I don't know how we're gonna get traffic. What it, what happens now is, they cut through our street to get to Wickham Farms, they're gonna do the same thing for Costco. Our street's gonna be, you know, it's just not meant for a lot of traffic. It's very narrow, the bottom sides drop off, and you're gonna have to do something with that if, if that ever happens. And then if you're talking to the traffic on, on 250 with the Arbers of Penfield, and all the other things that are going on that I, that I didn't even know about, I don't know how you're gonna handle all that traffic. It's just completely ridiculous. But anyway, let, you know, let's put our foot on the brake and look at what we're doing to our neighborhood. It's just not good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Kevin Williams on deck. And Marlene, you're a go.
Good evening, and thank you for having us all speak tonight. My name's Marlene Rogowski, my husband and I live at 1781 Harris Road in Penfield. And one thing that I'm very excited about is the original MUD plan that we do have. I think there's been a lot of due diligence in creating it, and I look at that as our North Star in being able to judge other projects that are, that are coming into fruition. I do have a concern with Costco in this location, I do not think it's a fit. I think it needs to be part of the environment, it's massive, it's overscaled, and I have, you know, a concern with, with that particular implementation. I also am wondering, from a grand scale, how this would dovetail in with the Arbers, because the Arbers is proposing 42,000 square feet of commercial, and I'm concerned that it, the two pieces would be like competing with each other before we even know the success of the Arbers. And then finally, I'm a big proponent of reuse. I see what Fairport has done with the cannery, they have reused buildings, and that goes back to the question, is there other places that we've considered? And what comes to mind, and if we look at a broad community level, is the Xerox complex. It already has parking, it's near an expressway, and I really think that that could really help all around. And then finally, after listening to Mr. Wickham speak, I am curious, you know, some of the troubles, and curious on, you know, pulling in other light commercial, let's say what they've done in Nashville with the Gulch, where they have like, design within-reach furniture store or galleries, or, you know, Urban Outfitters. Once we build the Arbers, I'm wondering if that could attract other commercial that could help with the MUD vision. That's all I need to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, on deck, we have Jill, is it Deddes? Is there a Jill? Somebody named Jill? Last name begin with D? Maybe in the rotunda, we'll wait a couple minutes. And Kevin, you're on.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Williams in Tomlinson Woods, and I am in, in, just incredibly impressed with the comments made tonight. It's getting late, comments I would have made have been made. I want to thank, though, our neighbors. I'm not a sportscaster, but we came this close to pitching a shutout tonight, and I hope, and I know that the planning board is taking note, and I hope the town board takes note. The, I, I look at the, what's going on with our development, the current, the current project being built, and it's almost insanity to me to think you're going to cram all of this into this little corridor that is so pure and pristine. So anyway, I wanted to thank my neighbors, keep up the good work, and I'm gonna be here to support my neighbors as well. And thank you.
Okay, did anybody find Jill? All right, I will set her aside. Lori Morris and Erin Bell. Erin?
Erin Bell left.
She left?
Yes.
Okay, and you're Lori?
Yes.
Okay, so Erin left. How about Andrea Mainz? Okay, you're on deck. Okay.
Hi, Lori Morris, 11 Folkestone Lane. The two gentlemen that were representing the developers mentioned words like holistic and vibrant, and I have to say that every other week when I'm in Costco, I never think of those words when I'm pulling in. And this is not a diatribe against Costco, because I love it, I'm there every other week. It just truly, as multiple people have mentioned, does not fit that image. And so when I think of an anchor retailer or an anchor store, you go there, you get out of your car, you wander around, I'm in and out of Costco, I pack up my trunk, I get home. When I wander around Fairport, Pittsford, Webster, those are areas that are vibrant, holistic, community, walkable. So the addition of some sidewalks and additional roadways will not draw and keep people there. When we moved here 10 years ago, right when my son was starting school, we moved out of the city, we still have our house in the city, and I dragged my husband here kicking and screaming because he wanted to stay in the park cab area where we could walk to restaurants and stores. But we fell in love with our neighborhood, and the thing that sold us was we drove around, and there were lemonade stands, and neighbors walking their dogs and chatting in the street, and we could see our, we could see raising our kids there. So now we have a teenager and a child in elementary school, and we're crossing Penfield all day long for sports practices and events at. Our neighborhood directly comes out onto 250, so now I'm thinking he'd have to go back around where there's a light because I wouldn't want him to try and make that left-hand turn. My nine-year-old has been asking when he can walk down 250 to go down to Starbucks and now Five Guys. And I'd have to say, it completely would have changed our consideration of where we are had we known that that type of traffic or that that corridor would look like that. So I know there will be some development there at some point, but I'd really love it if a plan came up that made it vibrant and holistic and had a feel like some of the communities around us, that really took into consideration the pedestrian, what will hold people there, keep young families moving in to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on deck, we have Daniel Moore. And Andrea?
Hello.
Your turn.
I'm Andrea. I'm over at Pinebook Circle. I just wanted to bring up something really quick that somebody had mentioned. There was outrage over the YMCA before, and the YMCA of Greater Rochester total has 95,000 members compared to, I think somebody said 9 million people going in and out of Costco daily. And to compare a nonprofit to a $250 billion company is just not a fair comparison. So everybody has brought up some really good points, including the traffic. Not only does traffic bring inconvenience and safety issues, but I wanted to bring up one point about health issues. Most studies have shown that for every 10% increase in traffic density, there's a 15% increase in asthma-related visits to the emergency room, hospitals, and clinic. This not only increases symptoms for children who already have asthma, but living near high-density traffic contributes to the onset of childhood asthma. And as a mother of a seventh-month-old, I would be highly concerned that the increase in traffic could be detrimental to his health. This is a health hazard for both adults and children alike. For adults with asthma, medium-to-high traffic exposure increases the likelihood of chronic symptoms by 40 to 80%. There are many residential neighborhoods nearby, including, I think somebody had talked from one of the senior...
Can I stop you for a second? Do you have a, can you cite that study or drop off or give our staff a link to that?
Do you want it?
You can.
You can finish, you can finish.
Yeah, finish your, it doesn't have to be right now.
Yeah. And this is actually only one of many studies that have shown that. So this one is called Reported Neighborhood Traffic and the Odds of Asthma: Asthma-Like Symptoms: A Cross-Sectional Analysis of Multiracial Cohort of Children. And I'm a physical therapist who's worked in both pediatrics and cardiopulmonary rehabilitation units, so I'm very familiar with analyzing research critically, and this was the number one thing that I had thought about when the proposed Costco was brought up. And then also, in addition to that, there's a lot of research showing, I don't have a copy of that research, you'll have to find that one on your own, but mitigating traffic is actually a very large fiscal burden with little to no improvement in reducing congestion. So I think everything else that I was going to say was brought up by my wonderful neighbors, but I'll leave you with this. Our slogan is "A Town of Plan Progress." Progress doesn't always have to mean industry and multimillion-dollar corporations. Progress can mean progressing toward more walkable communities, progressing towards safer and healthier communities, progress toward improving nature and parks, progress for the people. Basically, progress toward what you would want your children and grandchildren to grow up in. Is it a community of convenience and capitalistic values, or is it a community of parks and nature and biking and small businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all our slips. So Daniel, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Moore. As of Monday, I am now a former member of the Energy and Environmental Conservation Committee, and prior to that, I was also a conservation board member from 2020 to 2023. I would first like to ask, will the ECC be involved in this? Because as the developers mentioned in their presentation, there are EPods involved, and so far, I've heard nothing, and the ECC has heard nothing about going to the site and reviewing the possible environmental impacts. And then to keep this short, also, in order for plan development to be rezoned, well, in order for development to be rezoned to plan development according to state law, it does say that it has the furtherment of the comprehensive plan, and as everyone has said before me, it just clearly does not, and so I would be welcome to share the law if need be.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to, let's see, Jill still not around? Daniel and Johanna? Okay, so we have 10 minutes. I will say that I appreciate everyone's input. I very much appreciate almost all of you stuck to the three-minute timer, and that helped us get this through. And I can, think I can speak for the board, and thank you very much for your input. Is there, we have a couple of minutes. Does anybody else want to speak to this? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
My husband and I bought a small farm here in 1960. We raised all of our children, our grandchildren, now we have our great-grandchildren there. So it was a beautiful country place. We were very happy to be able to be fairly close to a village but still have a nice green space around us.
Did you give your address?
1750 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. We live on top of the hill, right on the curve, and we have had so many fatal accidents over the years. You just have to sit in the driveway once just to watch. School bus, they pass the school bus all the time. It's not safe. When we moved there, there was a beautiful picket fence out front full of red blaze roses. Well, then the state came along and said, oh, we're going to widen the road, we're going to do this and that, so your stuff has to go. All right, that's development. We could live with that, but if you're going to put a Costco's down there, you certainly aren't going to be able to handle a two-lane road, that's for sure. And I don't know, if you take it, if you make it a four-lane road, where's our house going to be? My bedroom's going to be looking out at the road? I mean, right at the road? So it's not safe. Other than that, Penfield is a beautiful place to live, and I don't want to have to move in my late years after living here 64 years. I think I was probably the longest-living person here. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Striped shirt, yes.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Vicki Flynn. I reside at 1 Mallory Lane. I've been there 22 years, and I moved out here because Penfield at the time was, their motto was "Open Spaces," and I loved it here, and that's why I moved out of the city. One thing I would like the board to consider, and the planning board and the town board going forward with the mixed-use development and the 250 corridor, is please consider the speed of what is going on. If people are not opening businesses in the development, what's the one by the Y? There's no small businesses there, what's going to happen with the Arbers? Are there going to be small businesses there? Is it going to just be a disaster later and become hood housing? That's a real concern of mine. If people don't move in there and have those small businesses, and kids don't move out of their homes to live in those expensive apartments, it could all just be abandoned and a disaster. So please consider that moving forward at the speed that these developments happen to keep our community beautiful and a place where people want to move to and raise their families, such as we have here.
Thank you. Sekar of green shirt, did you want to?
Hi, Cara Veder again. I just wanted to clarify that in no way, when I was asking a question before about conflict of interest, was I being accusatory. I was asking a question, and I don't know if conflicts of interests are made public with things like this. So I was in no way accusing this board or the town board of having those. I'm asking, do we get to know who's benefiting financially from this decision? It was really a genuine question, and I wanted to clarify it on the record and not after the meeting because I wanted it stated on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for giving me a quick minute. My name's Elijah Wade. I live at, in Newbury Park. So, real quick, I'm opposed to this, but I have a specific question. Does Costco, and I don't know if this is something...
If you could make sure you're talking into the microphone.
Does Costco typically, when they submit for these types of things, have alternative sites already in mind that they're already planning for? And do they sometime, I'm curious if they're approaching a regional location, if they consider, if they look at a first spot as something they know will fail so that then they can approach a different spot? I'd be curious to know if there's an alternative site in mind or if that's been discussed with anyone?
It's certainly a question that we can ask.
It'd be good to know.
I have no idea.
Is that something that the two engineers behind me could speak to or?
Kelly asked the question, they don't have an answer tonight.
Okay.
We can endeavor to get that.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, sir?
My name is Joe. I live at 1180 Northrup Road.
Joe.
I just want jogendals.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment, and we heard the store in question, I don't even want to say their name again, but they said that they would help with the traffic in the area. But their goal as a business is to bring as much traffic as possible. That's how they're going to increase their profits year over year. So while they may try to help, their goal is to bring as much traffic as possible to the area. So if traffic starts to die down, they're going to do something to get more traffic in the area. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thanks. Okay. Come on up.
My name's Chuck Allen, and I live at 1518 Webster Fairport Road, because that's what the name of the road was when I grew up there. I live, I've lived on 250 Webster Fairport Road or Fairport Nine Mile Point Road for 58 years. And when Xerox was in its heyday, I didn't have as much traffic as I've got now. My question is, are they going to go to a four-lane highway to take care of this traffic? Because you, it's not safe now with the traffic that's there. If you make a left-hand turn into my driveway, I'm on the east side of the road, and you have people on the shoulder going by at 55 miles an hour, you're going to have to go to that. If you go to a four-lane highway, you're going to destroy East Penfield, or not East Penfield, but Penfield Center, because all the houses in there, including Dick and Rosie's and all them through there, are going to be gone. Now where are all we going? Dick and Rosie are older than I am, and I'm 82 years old, so where am I going?
I don't think they wanted you to say that out loud. It's just my assumption.
It's not something we need. My problem is even the development, not to get into development they're putting up there now, where, with all these are gone, where are people going to get their food from? You can, you can bring Costco's in, you can do anything you want, but you know what? Farmland is getting pretty damn scarce. And if you like to eat stuff from Mexico or southern places down, way down south, that's your privilege. But I don't, and I don't think that we need something like Costco's in there because it does not fit in with the community. Like I said, I was born and brought up, I was born on the corner of Penfield Center Road and 250, lived on Allen Road, and it was spent 58 years, four years when I got married, I lived in Webster, and then we moved back. So I've gone a whole sum of about two miles from where I was born, about a half a mile from where I was born to where I live now. So, yeah, the, trying to say is the traffic, with something like this, you just can't believe it. This isn't counting truck traffic or anything else, this is just cars. Construction traffic is terrible on the road now. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, yes.
My name's Lou Hosenfeld, 2080 Harris Road. I liked all the comments, and actually, I'm opposed to Costco coming here. Nobody really talked about sewers or electric power. Where is all that coming from? There's going to be a lot of toilets flushing. Are you going to have to be making bigger sewers, sewer lines? With all the grid that's going on and the power and supposedly we can't use gas anymore, are we going to be able to supply Costco with all that power?
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, once again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. Again, this is a sketch plan. Our process is we take all this information and try to summarize it up into a memo that we will send to the applicant, and they take that information and decide on their next course of action. They may return, they may not return, don't know. So again, thanks everyone for coming, and we will call us here enclosed. Brown Croft.
I want to make the motion to a table, 2520 Brown Croft Boulevard.
Begin the draft of a sketch letter.
Begin the draft, sketch plan.
Beginning the draft of a sketch letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
Kelly, second. Look at your wife came down here.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Canower, aye.
Tiding, aye.
Oh, thank you.
Canower, aye.
I, yep, thank you.
Canower?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then the Plank Road subdivision, let's entertain a motion to table it.
That was the 822 Hal Row.
Oh, Plank Road.
No, Plank Road.
Is it Plank?
William Sub...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
1820 Plank Road, you got it.
Yeah, 1820, 1820 Plank Road, motion to table.
Tiding, second.
Do we want to start a draft approval resolution?
Yes, that makes sense. And to draft an approval resolution?
Tiding, second.
Okay.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tiding's aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have that covered. The Costco, let's begin drafting a sketch letter. Okay, we have that covered. The Costco, let's begin drafting a sketch letter. I'll move to begin the draft of a sketch letter. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Aiken. Oh, Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding's aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone for your time tonight. Thank you all at home for watching. And we will, we will stand adjourned.